Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Monday, May 24, 2021 Fayetteville City Council Meeting. Good evening to all of you who are joining us online and those who are in the audience with us. At this time, we will have the invocation by Rabbi Goldberg of the Beth Israel Congregation. I ask that you would please stand for the invocation immediately following if you would continue standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Rabbi, are you there?
I'm here. Thank you.
Good evening.
While still some of us peering over Zoom, we find our thought cells gathered remotely for the May City Council meeting, just one week before Memorial Day, which I think provides us a good opportunity to reflect before launching into discussion of the important work of our community by our city leaders. While the precise details of the origin of this day are a matter of some dispute, it is clear that Decoration Day emerged as a sad day to memorialize and honor soldiers lost in the Civil War, especially by decorating their graves. It was not until the United Nationwide sacrifice of World War I, the shared Decoration Day in both Southern and Northern states, began to coalesce in our country, and it was only in the wake of the even greater toll of World War II that Memorial Day by name truly emerged out of Decoration Day, though not officially adopted until 1967. This occasion came to include the tragic loss of military lives in Korea and Vietnam, just it has come to encompass over the past two decades those who fell in defense of our nation in Iraq and Afghanistan, as well as in countless other encounters around the world since our founding. The next Monday, we will most certainly pray for the souls of each one of the nearly 670,000 combat deaths suffered by American servicemen and women since 1775, a number made all the more sobering by finding it reflected in those Americans who have so far perished from COVID-19 in just over a year's time. This evening, I recall the words of Major General John A. Logan, who on May 5, 1868, first called for a nationwide day of memory and who famously wrote, "Let no vandalism of avarice or neglect, no ravages of time testify to the present or to the coming generations that we have forgotten, as a people the cost of a free and undivided republic. If other eyes grow dull and other hands slack, and other hearts cold in the solemn trust, ours shall keep it well as long as the light and warmth of life remains in us." His words should reflect for us too a sacred commitment, but just as Memorial Day has come over time to include more than just Civil War dead, so too, I believe, it important that our memories this evening take into account more than those who died in the line of fire. Our memories need to also bear in mind more than those who died wearing an American uniform. So many have died at so many times in so many places and for so many reasons. Each and every one of them deserves our honor, our hearts, and our prayers, but our memories and prayers also need to include those who had no idea that their deaths would become part of the martyrdom that Major General Logan called "the cost of a free and undivided republic." Too many have suffered because of too many sources of division, both beyond our borders and even more tragically within them as well. So our memories must encompass all those we have lost in a spirit of just conciliation that heals rather than hurts, soothes rather than stings, and unifies rather than pushes apart. And our memories must spur us to acts of betterment rather than merely dwelling in the eternal status quo of our minds past. Let our memories give us the wisdom to turn our multitude of differences into diverse notes of beautiful harmony rather than discordant tones of anger, resentment, jealousy, and hate. As this city council continues this evening in its ongoing commitment to strive for the advancement of our community, let we and they be inspired by the memory of our countless fellow citizens who struggled, sometimes against unfair odds, to create an ever-improved life for themselves, their families, their neighbors, and those who came after them. And so I pray in the words of my faith tradition's memorial prayer, God full of mercy, who dwells in the heights, grand perfect rest beneath the wings of the divine presence, among the holy and the pure, whose radiance is like the firmament, to the souls of all those who have given their lives in the name of the United States of America, those who have perished in its defense, as well as those who have been slaughtered in acts of terror or hatred. May the memory of their bravery, their dedication, and their innocence be with us throughout time, for they have passed to eternity. May they rest in peace. We beseech you, Master of Mercy, shelter them beneath your sheltering wings forever and bind up their souls in the bond of everlasting life. The Lord is their portion. May they rest in peace in God's eternal home. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rabbi, thank you so much for those words of wisdom and the prayer. Can you spend just a brief moment and tell us a little bit about yourself and your ministry?
Absolutely. Coming up now on two years, I've been the rabbi at Beth Israel Congregation, the only Jewish congregation in Fayetteville. So we encompass a diverse background of Jews, unlike some communities which have a variety of synagogues for those Jews from. We're a small congregation of only 100 families or so, but our congregation is proud to have been part of the Fayetteville community for over 100 years, and we look forward to continuing to be part of an ever-growing vibrant Fayetteville. And I'll just also point out that we're proud that just a few weeks ago, we put up a large banner sign that we've been working on for a while on Morganton Road where we're located to show our appreciation and honor and respect to all of our hometown heroes, those frontline and essential workers throughout the Fayetteville area who have kept our community running despite all of the challenges that COVID has wrought, and especially when some of us had the ability to take cover in our homes remotely, so many others did not have that luxury on our behalf, and our appreciation to them is boundless.
Thank you so much, Rabbi, for joining us tonight. Counsel, as we move through our announcements and introductions, I would like to introduce the new president of the chamber, Ms. Sheri Fivash. Good evening. Thank you for joining us. Also, her husband, Randy, who is the interim director at the Fayetteville County Visitors Bureau. Welcome if you all wanted to give a quick statement of any type.
I just want to say what a pleasure it is to be here and be part of the community and how welcoming it has been to be here. I've met several of you. I'd like to meet all of you. If you have the opportunity, I'd love to reach out to you and set up a meeting to talk. I'd love you to be involved in the chamber and get to know each one of you personally. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I would just echo the same thing. You know, we came to Fayetteville. I came here. I retired from state government. I've been in the tourism business for plus 40-plus years, and my intent was to come here and support Sheri and the wonderful opportunity that the Fayetteville Chamber offers her. And so I was Doug and City Manager Doug, and Amy from County Council, County Government asked me to come in and help, and I was more than pleased to do so. And this is the business that I'm in and the business that I love. Fayetteville is a wonderful, wonderful community. I've spent a good bit of time in the Carolinas in my past. I'm from Georgia originally, so I've spent a lot of time in the Carolinas, and so this is such a terrific, terrific community. Obviously, you know that. And Sheri and I both are happy to be here, thrilled to be here, thrilled to be a part of this community, thrilled to have it as our hometown, and happy to be a part of the business community and the breadth of this community. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, and City Manager. We appreciate being here, and anything we can do to help, I can do to help as far as the convention visitors bureau goes. I'm the interim CEO now, but I'm happy to, don't know how long I'll be there, but I'm going to be there till we get it fixed. So we're happy to be here. Thank you a lot.
Can we give them a round of applause? Welcome to Fayetteville. And Randy, we told Gavin to take snippets of what you just said, and that's going to be our new infomercial. Okay. All right. So at this time, we'll go to Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted briefly announce that Fayetteville State University is hosting, has been hosting vaccination clinics, COVID-19 vaccination clinics for the Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson. That is every Thursday until the end of June.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Please remember to get vaccinated, you all, so we can put COVID in our rearview mirror. Mayor Pro Tim Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I need to brag a little bit on city staff, part of city staff. So every year, we have a team that comes together to do the mic-to-mic half marathon, and we are called the J. Walkers. And this Sunday, I and Councilmember Banks McLaughlin, Elizabeth Sumberndike, and Tracy Broyles, and Jay Reinstein, with our families in tow, went and walked the Cape Fear River Trail. And I will be honest with you, I have not seen the new parts of the River Trail, and I got to see it this Sunday, and it is breathtaking, amazing. And if you have not gone, you know, I've always started on the Methodist side, if you walk it all the way through, it is, you feel like you're in the mountains. And kudos to our Parks and Rec for the great job that they have done. So just to let everybody know that we have kept the tradition alive, and I kept the tradition alive with Jay Reinstein, it took us four hours, like always. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. All right, counsel, moving right along to the City Manager's report, item 5.0.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Per the Governor's orders on May 14, lifting the mask mandates for most situations in the state, including public facilities except for transit, we will be also lifting the mask mandate for city employees. I'll be sending council some information about that, and it'll be going out tomorrow. Our FAST, airport, police, and fire will be on a slightly different posture, given the operational nature of their positions, but we hope that this is a signal, along with the Governor's lifting of the mandate across the state, that things are gradually returning to normal. Earlier today as well, the council gave me the nod to begin working with staff for us to actually bring citizens back to these meetings. And so I'll be sending out something to council after we've had an opportunity to further consider how many folks would be able to host in council chambers and when. But I think that both of those are positive signs that Fayetteville, like we hope most of the country is, getting back to normal on the other side of COVID-19. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I don't have any questions about what you discussed. However, I do like to know, for the listening audience, when do you plan to have an update for us as it relates to the American Rescue Plan dollars that we will be receiving? And can you give an estimate as to how much we will be receiving?
Yes, ma'am. We have about $11.5 million in emergency rental assistance that will be managed largely through contracting our Economic and Community Development Office. And we also have about $40.4 million that'll be coming from the ARPA or the larger COVID. And on both of those, particularly on the $40.4 million, our plan is to discuss that with you this Thursday at your budget work session.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Council item 6.0 is approval of the agenda. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to approve the agenda with the exception of 9.05. For item 9.05, I'd like to request a continuance to June 28.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Ingram to approve with the exception of modification of item 9.05. There's a second by Councilmember Wright. Any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 7.0 is the consent agenda. Councilman Davis.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as posted.
All right. There's a motion by Councilmember Davis. There's a second by Councilmember Hare. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel, I'll look to you for your vote. Madam Clerk, that is unanimous. Motion carries. Item 8.0 is the legislative hearing. Planned neighborhood development revision for Lake Shore subdivision. Mr. Harmon.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and council. As we get started on this, you'll recall this is one item that was tabled at your meeting last month. We've got too many cases tonight. That's the same one I just grabbed. Okay. I'm just going to go through this fairly quickly. Like I said, this is a case that was heard last month. The, some of the Lake Association, a couple of people spoke in opposition and asked that this be tabled to this month in order to give them the opportunity to have a, give them the opportunity to get a study done of that area, since this property does border Old McFadden Lake. This property is owned by Mong St. Pierre. This is to revise a planned neighborhood development plan to allow four duplexes on two different properties, a total of eight units altogether at the intersection of Georgetown, Bahama Loop, and Offen Drive. Just to refresh your memory as to where the property is located, again, it is all zone P and D. This was the original site plan that came in. This is the revised site plan after the developer went before the zoning commission. This one, as you saw last time, now shows the driveways, one entrance on each property, but then parking areas for each unit, plus a garage at each unit. This is how the property currently looks. These are some of the surrounding properties. This is just across the street on Offen. This is just across the street on Georgetown. This is, you can see a little bit of the lake in here. This property is just to the left in this picture. And then this is another view from basically the northwest there. This is the original P and D plan approval. This is Canoe Creek, which was approved back in '07, but nothing happened in their two-year timeframe. So their plans or their approval was invalidated. They were approved at that time for 14 units on these two properties. Again, Planning Commission and staff have recommended approval based on congruency with the proposed revision. Proposed amendment, we felt, would result in a logical and ordered development pattern. The proposal would develop two lots with two duplexes on each, eight units, while keeping the minimum required open space in the overall P and D development. This revision is consistent with our 2040 land use plan, which calls for low-density residential. This designation mainly consists of single-family residential homes, some accessory dwellings, and occasionally duplexes and townhomes. Under this revision, the lots would be developed at a lower density than had previously been approved in the P and D revision in 2007 for 14 lots. That's all staff has at this point. If you'll hold your questions of staff till after your public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Individuals desiring to speak at the public hearing must have signed up, city clerk by name and address before 7:00 PM. 15 minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue. Individual speakers shall be limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement. A single spokesperson has been designated. You may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record. You may then address the city council. You will be indicated, the light will change, given a 30-second warning, that you have 30 seconds remaining, and at the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. And Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, ma'am. We have six speakers for this item.
With that, I'll open the public hearing. You can call your first speaker.
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Whitney Saracusas.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening, ma'am. Can you state your name and address for us?
Yes, sir. My name is Whitney Saracusas, 46, 15 Dunk Castle Road. I am, as we've mentioned before, that plan, we've done everything we could to fit the standards and regulations that are set. So I would like to reiterate that this plan is outside of the 100-year floodplain line. So a lot of time from the previous meetings, it's a mention about flooding, water, no erosion, when it comes to building and all types of environmental like situations. And we've already addressed that before with the builders, saying they're going to make sure there's going to be barriers to prevent such things, as well as to reiterate again that this house, these duplexes will be outside of the floodplain. We even had, spoke to the storm water manager, Mr. Reeves, and he took a look at the proposed plan. He said that due to the fact that the homes are outside of the 100-year floodplain lines, there would be no reason for us to get a flood permit, and also because we are building one duplex at a time and less than one acre is being disturbed, there would also be no need for an erosion and sediment permit either. So I think that having this proposed plan would be beneficial for the community because property values would go up. There would be more homes for all of our citizens and with, especially with the concern for the traffic. We've expanded the driveways so that more cars can fit in, so there'd definitely be no traffic for the neighborhood. That is all.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, please call your next speaker.
Mr. Robert Duran.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Robert Duran. I live at 1227 Birchmere Way, Fayetteville, 28312. Thank you for letting me make this little brief presentation with you today. As you can see, most of the concerns were about disrupting traffic flow, disrupting having people park on the streets, having people interrupt and possibly upset this McFadden Lake. We did have that last drawing that was up there shows one ingress egress for each pair of duplexes. We have an oversized footprint now for parking, not only in the duplex and the garage itself, but ample parking spaces there. So one of the concerns where people will be parking on the streets, that will not be the case, especially with the ample driveway and parking spaces allotted for each of those duplexes. I'd also like to say, listen, I am, I studied, I'm an environmental engineer from my college days. I'm not practicing. I'm not saying I'm one, but that's what my degree in college was. And I can tell you, we're building four houses on those two properties, right? And the environmental impact from that is negligible. And I believe last month, right, I believe it was Councilmember Dawkins made the comment himself, saying, listen, we can see where this thing was zoned, what is zoned right now, and what we are doing is well within the status and norms of good building practices and putting multifamily houses in those areas, right, taking great use and care of the environment and the resources available in order to fit the land use planning of Fayetteville. So I thank you again for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mong St. Pierre.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is Frank Devine. I'm with my wife, Mong St. Pierre. I live at 2605 Delcrest Drive in Orlando, Florida. I had asked that I could be able to speak last, and I was hoping maybe I can defer this. That way, if any new issues come up, I can address those as well. If that would be okay with the city council and the mayor, if you would let me go last for, just to address some of the things that have come up.
Public hearings typically don't work that way. You're saying, are you speaking on behalf of someone with the remaining time? I didn't understand your question.
No. My question, basically, it comes down to what happened last time that No, my, my, my question, basically, it comes down to, what happened last, last time that we were here is I had raised my hand. I said, well, you're, you're bringing up problems that I could talk to, uh, and nobody addressed, nobody talked to me at that point. They just, uh, at that time decided to table the whole thing.
Okay.
Yes.
I got you. Well, if the council at the end of the public hearing has questions for staff or for yourself, um, then, then certainly we'll call on you, so you can remain on the line, okay?
All right, that'd be fine. Thank you, ma'am.
Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Mr. Roland Kleinman.
Mr. Kleins?
Yes, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, my name is Roland Kleinman. I live at 342 Offing Drive. I live in the property directly across from the, uh, the property in question here. Um, I want to thank the council for hearing our concerns. The first thing I want to make, uh, point I want to make is that I'm certainly not against the owner of the property making a profit, developing it. Uh, we just want to make sure that it's developed in a manner that's gonna be, uh, in the best interest of not only the neighborhood and the community, but especially the lake as well. I'm also on the, uh, Lake Association Board. Um, when I purchased my home, I understood that this was single-family homes. I, I did my due diligence. Everything I could find, records showed that they, it was owned, single-family. And I believe that that's the way, even though people have said it's changed to multi, and at one time it was commercial, uh, I think the neighborhood has developed in a manner that's most beneficial to single-family. We don't have sidewalks. We don't have a park. We don't have green areas like a lot of cities do. Uh, and sticking a whole bunch more people in one small area is just gonna make things, uh, a little bit more difficult, I think. And I don't think that the infrastructure is set up to, to handle that. Uh, one of the things that I did notice, um, and the people that are for it, uh, I know they all have good intentions, but they don't live here. None of the people who said they were for it live here. Every person who said they were against it does live here. Um, and everyone who is for it has a financial interest, which is fine. I believe one house on each one of those parcels would be fine. Uh, I happen to live through Hurricane Matthew, which, uh, bringing in the sediment problem. Uh, you've addressed the issue of not enough parking, but you've, um, complicated the issue of the environment. Uh, we had an environmental study done. I walked the property. The specialist said that the more impervious surfaces we have on that property, the more chances of flooding is gonna happen, and the more sediment will be washed into the lake. After Matthew, we had a, uh, sediment of about three hundred to four hundred feet long, thirty feet wide, washed into the lake that I could walk on. We asked the city to help us remove it, because you dump your stormwater into our lake. We asked P W C to help us, because they were working a project. Nobody would help. I actually paid out of my own funds to have about thirty truckloads, dump, dump truckloads of sediment removed. And increasing the impervious surface there is going to increase the possibility of sediments, uh, in, in that area. Uh, I can see my time's running down. A lot more that I would like to be able to address. Uh, I would like to take a look at those driveways. That's making it worse, not better. Um, there won't be any surface for the rainwaters and the stormwaters to seep into the, into the soil if we're completely covered up. Uh, and like I said, the, the residents here, uh, are the ones who believe that this is not in the best interest of, of the area, the environment, and the lake. And so I would ask you to vote no on the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Ed Blanchard.
Good evening, council. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, sir. Please, please state your address and your name for us, Mr. Blanchard.
Yes, sir. Ed Blanchard, 5444 Summer Duck Road, Fayetteville, North Carolina, 28314. I've been the, am current president of, uh, McFadden Lake Association and have been since the previous, uh, zoning of conservation was recommended for the floodplain in this area in 2008. So, thank you for your time. Uh, council, it's occurred to me that the issue is really larger than just these eight units. What we've got, we've got, um, a city of Fayetteville, which was less than a hundred square miles until 1996. And we have a, in effect, a lake, of course privately held, that, um, receives stormwater for thirty-six square miles. So if you do the math, even after the Big Bang and the Fort Bragg annexation, our lake takes on thirty-six square miles of stormwater. Uh, I've emailed several maps to a lot of you. I apologize if we've gone overboard. Um, we, we've had to do that since 2008, and so thirteen years later, we're, we're asking again. This is a very unique site. As we speak today, the latest email I received from, uh, Deener, there is an over-topping, a dam over, over-topping study occurring right now in the Cape Fear River Basin, McFadden Lake Association. This dam is suspected to over-top. Uh, they're gonna tell us in 2022 how many inches of rain will cause that event. These properties, if approved, would be underwater if that happens. The 2010, the 2020, the 2030, and the 2040 plan speak to and call for conservation, zoning, and buffers. And folks, it just hasn't happened. Back in the day, before this council, it was not what was right and what was fair. It was who you knew. And with all due respect to Mr. Dawkins, when he said, let's just put a 7-Eleven there, that put a light in my head. It's not that you don't care. It's just too complex of an issue to jam eight units while there's a state study going on to be completed in the year 2022. So I would ask again, we support single-family. We think the council should be good stewards of our finances and our land resources and water resources. And we know, expect, and appreciate you doing the right thing, which is to table this until the state study is completed now.
Thank you, sir.
Our final speaker is Ms. Corinne Byrne.
Ms. Byrne? Ms. Byrne, hit, uh, star six to unmute your, yourself, please.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. I'm Corinne Byrne. I live at 5575 Nix Road, Fayetteville, 28314. I live on the lake, and I have for thirty-five years. Um, in that time, I have a creek by my house. I've watched the slowly running creek even during rainstorms. You know, it would, it would swell, but it was very manageable. Today, when we have a rain event, it just surges. It just overflows, and it's due to the loss of watershed. Um, I agree with everything that, that, um, Mr. Kleinman said. And I would support single units that wouldn't take up so much of the green property. Um, but I don't think that I can support multi-units on the two acres. So I just wanted to put my voice in. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
No, we have no further speakers for this item.
All right, so, um, do have a couple of lights. Uh, Councilman Dawkins. Yeah, well, before we do that, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Dawkins?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, being a big believer in private property rights and, uh, based on the review and recommendation of approval by our city staff, I make a motion to approve the planned neighborhood development plan revision for Lake Shore subdivision to add two, two-family dwellings or duplexes on each property located at the intersection of Georgetown Circle, uh, Bahama Loop, and Offing Drive, and being the property of Maung and Ron Enterprises Three LLC. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Motion on the floor by Councilman Dawkins. Uh, this is the second, uh, light. It was Councilman Davis. Uh, discussion on the motion, Councilmember Kinston. Your lights on, right? Yes, ma'am. You have the floor.
Thank you. Mayor, um, Kovan, thank you. Um, what I would like to say is, in speaking with the residents of the neighborhood, there's been several emails and, uh, communication back and forth regarding the property. Um, one, the lake itself. Two, about the parking. Um, if the residents have company, the way that the new development was done, it still is going to cause an issue with parking. Um, the second issue is, is when the original development was done, there has been some natural changes that has happened with, um, tornadoes, hurricanes, and rainfall within the last twenty-four hours. As Councilmember Dawkins said, I do respect the, um, the owner's right to be able to build. The Neighborhood Association is trying to negotiate or would like to negotiate the fact of doing single homes versus the multi-units. And based on the information, that would leave some additional green space. So I can't support this option based on the Neighborhood Association. And again, the Neighborhood Association has paid their own money in order to be able to get the additional, um, information, and we did ask for the additional time. It has not been, uh, completed. So at this time, um, on behalf of the Neighborhood Association, the concern with the flooding, um, that area does flood even with twenty-four-hour rain, so, um, I do want those considered. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Woodell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question to, I, I'm not sure exactly who this would be posed to. But my question is, I think what I'm, I was hearing and what I've read is that this would be built to the minimum standard. Was, was that what I was hearing? That there was no, I know sometimes things come before the council and people say, because we know that there are concerns, we are going to go above and beyond and build beyond the minimum standard. I think I specifically heard that particularly in terms of, um, runoff and water solutions, this was being built to the minimum standard. Is that accurate? Or is there some, some additional work that's being done for this development to bring it into, come on up? Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't get signed up in time. I'm Daniel Wright. I'm actually the contractor. And what we're gonna do with this property is because, because I like, you know, the environment, you know, we need it. We, it's a beautiful lake, and we'd like to keep it that way. And if you look at the property, the way it's developed, the way we have it designed, the floodplain, we don't intend to remove any trees or any brush from that area. So even though we're gonna add impervious area in the front, we're only adding fifteen hundred. Our footprint on our duplex is really small. So the impervious area that we're adding is almost with two units is just barely larger than a single-family dwelling that we build. It's roughly twenty-five hundred square feet. So we're, we're only a tiny bit bigger than that. But usually in a development, what we do is we entirely clear a lot. But with the way this is and the lake and the, you know, we wanna take care of the environment, too. What we intend to do is, we don't intend to remove anything from the backside of the lot.
Is that specifically written into your plan? Because you're saying we don't intend to. You're not saying we will not.
No, I, I'm telling you, as the contractor, I will not clear the trees beyond the line, because it saves me money. Not clearing the trees also saves me money, so it's in my best interest not to clear them as well.
And so as far as the design standard of, of the location, and I might not be using the correct terminology, but I'm gonna trust that you'll understand my question, and you'll give me the correct terminology where it's needed. But in terms of the design standard, are you building to the minimum design standard?
No, I, I think I understand your question.
Okay.
The minimum is like eight bushes per building. So, and that's the entire, that's if I clear-cut an entire half-acre, I need eight bushes. That's it. That's all I need. So what I intend to do is go well beyond that. I intend to leave the entire backside of the lot as trees, wooded, just like it is now. Every bit of that wooded area actually absorbs that water.
So when we're talking about the parking, because I'm not just specifically speaking about the, the tree line, but also there were some concerns by the residents that were brought forward about parking?
If you saw the development, we, we amended the driveways. So what we have is there's two parking spaces for each duplex, plus a garage. And if you look at the amended version, there's also a turnaround.
Does that amendment increase the impervious surface?
It does, but only, only minimally. But what it does is it almost, it adds where a third spot, a temporary person, a visitor, like you said, could park in the turnaround on the backside.
Okay, and my last question at this time is, when, when the caller spoke about, or the, the speaker in opposition spoke specifically about the, um, over-topping of the dam, have you all that are considering developing this property been in communication with the agency that is doing this study so that you can ensure that what you're building is not going to end up jeopardized by flooding?
No, we're, we're leaning on the stormwater Fayetteville's own people to tell us that, yes, that everything is okay. This property is fine to build on the stormwater. Your techs here in Fayetteville told us that being outside of the floodplain, completely outside of the floodplain, and leaving all the trees, that we should be, you know, we'll do minimal.
So who from our office can speak to that aspect? Because who from the city can speak to that aspect? Because that is a concern that I, I would, I would, I, I would like to have that concern addressed. City manager, who can speak to whether or not we're considering that factor? Because we've gotten, as, as the caller said, we've gotten a lot of information about this particular item. And it's, it's, it's difficult when we don't have a background in engineering to make heads or tails of that, so.
Yes, ma'am. This is a, um, land use issue.
Mm-hmm.
And so before it would move forward for construction, they would have to go before, uh, potentially another regulatory arm. But I would leave that to Taurus or Dr. Newton, if he is here, to be able to answer that. But this is specifically about the planned neighborhood development.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
To your, to your question, Sheila, um, Sheila is here and would be able to answer a specific technical question. But in terms of who gives that information, it does occur as part of this, as a review on the technical review that you just heard from the city manager. He, uh, they will look at-
Is it a step after this?
It is after this. Anything that happens there has to go through a technical review. And at a minimum, they'll be two feet above finished floor elevation.
Does it come back to this council for?
It would not, no, ma'am. It would not come through. But the land use consideration is what you have. But the technical aspect, they cannot pass go, if you will, until they comply with all local, state, federal. And because of the lake and the hundred-year floodplain and that area, they have a, a number of measures that have to be put in place that all get handled in the technical review committee.
Okay, so since you referenced, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for your patience. I appreciate it. Since you referenced Ms. Thomas Ambat, if you would please, Ms. Thomas Ambat, come up and just briefly speak to whether or not consideration has been given to this study that they referenced about the topping over of the dam. You know dams are a hot topic in the city of Fayetteville, and so it'd be, it would behoove us to at least understand where we are in, in that part of the conversation.
So I think some of the things that you have to consider is that, um, I believe the footprint of these, uh, two buildings are currently not in the FEMA floodplain. So from what I understand, these two buildings, yeah, they're not in the FEMA floodplain. So that two foot above, above base flood elevation would not hold relevant in this particular case because the buildings are not within the FEMA floodplain.
Has that been updated? Because remember when we had those, those storms, this is my last question, I promise. When we had the storms, that Hurricane Matthew came through, um, there was a lot of dialogue about updating the FEMA floodplain maps. Have they been updated to reflect what we saw in terms of the flooding that took place throughout the city when, when those storms came through? Granted, they were the hundred-year storms, but I know that that was a topic of conversation. Has that happened?
The state is currently still working on the updates to the maps.
Thank you, ma'am.
Um, speaking on the over-topping analysis, typically, uh, large municipalities or municipalities, municipalities have what's called a no-rise analysis. In other words, um, if you're not in a FEMA floodplain, and if you're building outside of the FEMA floodplain against a creek, so on and so forth. Uh, if you're building a certain amount of impervious area, uh, part of the analysis that is usually required, if it's a very large development, is for the developer to present to the governing body that there is a no-rise impact. So in other words, that this particular development does not cause any downstream rise implications. This is done over and beyond what's called a FEMA, if you're building in an area that's outside of the FEMA floodplain. We in the city of Fayetteville do not have this particular requirement. So in terms of an over-topping analysis, this particular developer does not have to do that per our policy. They don't have to provide one. I know that the state is doing one as part of a larger Cape Fear study, but this particular developer does not have to do a no-rise analysis because they're not in the FEMA foot, foot, footprint.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, uh, May Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a quick question, and I, I tried to find it, and I couldn't. It's probably right in front of me. My question is, the duplexes, is what I'm seeing is that there is one duplex on each- My question is, the duplexes, is what I'm seeing is that there is one duplex on each plot of land. Is that correct? Two duplexes, so two buildings on each plot of land. And how big are these duplexes? What is the square footage? Okay. So, on the bottom floor, we're talking about 1,500. So, it's 1,500 square feet on the bottom floor, 1,500 square feet on the top floor?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's all I needed. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Ingram?
Thank you. I have a question. Ms. Ambat hit on it a little bit. And I'm only asking because I deal with it east of the river. So, in a community, there was houses developed on land that probably should not have been developed on. So, while the callers that called in said, in 24 hours, I guess their streets are being flooded. In 30 minutes, because those houses were developed, their streets are being flooded. And this same community is also, I guess, wrapped up into being determined as if it's going to be a part of the floodplains once the state continues. So, is there some type of assurance that once the development is done, where there won't be any adverse effects in terms of flooding, where, and I'm sure, I'm not sure if you got, you all know what it looks like when it floods east of the river or in many parts of Fayetteville, North Carolina? Can someone answer that question from our agenda discussion last week? We did learn that our environmental team did go out to site. Is that true? That's a question. Is that true that our environmental team went out to this site that is to be developed?
Sheila, Byron is also on the, online.
Right. Byron, so last week, if this assessment was done last week, Michelle Byron would be able to speak to that.
It came up in our discussion of our agenda that our environmental team did go to this site. So, I'm looking to ask, are we, do we know that there will be no adverse effects such as flooding, impacts of flooding to this area once the development is complete? If they are already seeing flooding in 24 hours, I can only imagine that would get worse.
Ma'am, from a consistent process for the entire city, you don't have a policy that requires the developer to do that analysis. If you're required, if the request is for this particular property, we would have to do that consistently for all other properties within the city of Fayetteville. We do not have a policy that requires a developer to do such an analysis.
So, we can give permits for areas where we know probably should not be developed? And I'm not saying this should not be developed. The residents that live there are in favor of something being developed there. They're supportive of that. I'm asking questions about adverse effects to flooding and what happens after the development.
Correct. So...
And we don't have a way to track that.
Byron, if you're on the call, maybe you can speak a little bit to our drainage-sensitive areas and our policy as it relates to drainage-sensitive areas. But I can speak further after you've had a few words.
Yes. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, sir.
Okay. Hey, I'm Byron Reeves. I'm the city stormwater manager. So, for this particular parcel, as has been mentioned, the 100-year floodplain does encroach on the rear of the property. These are established base flood elevations based off FEMA studies. That is where the anticipated 100-year storm would go. The proposed development is outside of the FEMA-regulated floodplain. In addition to that, when it comes to stormwater for the city, the proposed development is, would be considered new development. The site is nowhere near the 20,000-square-foot threshold that would require them to provide onsite stormwater control measures. As it speaks to the impervious and would it cause any increased flooding or anything like that, it will generate more runoff, but I can't speak to it increasing flooding levels. I think as one of the speakers mentioned earlier, you have a 32-square-mile drainage area, and we're talking about developing an acre and a half of that. The, I think another speaker spoke about, after Hurricane Matthew, you had a lot of sediment loading that came through. Offing Drive was damaged during Hurricane Matthew. If you'll recall, the, I believe it's the Lot Loman Dam that is north of Offing Drive failed. And when that dam failed, it sent all of that water and sediment down to Offing Drive and overtopped Offing Drive. In response to the damage that was done for Hurricane Matthew, the city actually did an H&amp;H analysis on Offing Drive to see if it was appropriately sized for the city's level of service. Offing Drive is sized for a 25-year storm event, which is the city's standard level of service. So, the culvert on Offing Drive is appropriately sized. There should be, in a 25-year storm event, no over-topping of Offing Drive. And I just, you know, like I said, you've got a 32-square-mile drainage area, and you're trying to quantify the impact of an acre and a half. It's gonna be negligible.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember here?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think both of you all could stay at the microphone. Help me understand this, please. Ms. Ambat or Dr. Newton? When we start looking at impervious areas, especially those that are very, very close to flooding concerns, just as, just as we use the, and you're gonna have to help me with this correct design name, but just as we use the corking-type product that absorbs water, I know we use a lot of that within the areas where our playgrounds are, because these impervious areas speed up water and the water doesn't have an opportunity to absorb, you know, fast, fast enough, filter it fast enough, and especially in an area that is a couple of feet from the back door. Is that, do we consider that as a product that can be used in those imperative areas? Or is that only for like parks and not for heavy vehicles to park on and to drive on?
I mean, from a perspective of impervious area, this particular, these particular duplexes do not meet the minimum threshold for a stormwater control device. So, they are, they're not adding greater than 20,000 square feet. If they were adding greater than 20,000 square feet, they would be required to add an SCM pond onsite for the development.
And I understand, I understand by the retention pond. I understand that. But this particular product that I know that we, it has been introduced, and some of the reason that it was introduced was due to flooding.
Correct. And so, typically, this product is introduced when you're trying to reduce that volume load that comes from an impervious area that doesn't meet the threshold. So, you add impervious area so that your impervious area contribution is less to lower the 20,000-square-foot cap, I mean, minimum threshold.
So, then is that something, I'm gonna let you speak, Dr. Newton, but is that something that is a part of our policy? That if it meets a certain, that this product is used or this product is not even? I mean, when do we use this? This product?
It can be one of the portfolio of tools that a developer can use to provide, to demonstrate that their contribution is less than 20,000 square feet. But right now, this particular property does not even meet the minimum for the SCM or the threshold.
Okay, okay.
So, just adding to what you heard, in this, your example and illustration?
Yes, sir.
In the development community, the building community, you will try to figure out where you have your downspouts on these. And you can see, I don't know if you see Lot 1 and 2 in the revised site plan in front of you. We can see that. I don't know if that's what you have in your monitor.
Yes, sir.
If you look at that number 2, you see that area they have separated between the two units? That's a swale. So, they will typically, they will typically design that so that the water would be controlled there. And if you have seen how people will put in French drains around properties, that is one of the enhancements that can be put in. But what the developer, the last thing the developer wants to have is have standing water, wet water, and erosion on that lot. So, what they often do is exactly what you've said. I've had several of my builder friends in the Charlotte area when I was a general contractor there that did exactly what you said, where they created a part of the area where the cars parked and had where the water actually seeped in. And there are design pavers that do that. And it's possible that they would do this. And related to this, if I can just use my hand as the example, knowing that the water is all level at the same elevation, but the dam being down here, this is sitting up at a top spot. So, to Councilmember Ingram's question about have we looked at and considered certain things, the fact that this is sitting at a low spot and everything else around it is higher, this is not generating additional rainfall to the other lots that exist there. But it is the water from this coming down into that part of that high part of the lake, one of the finger areas of that lake. So, I hope that answers that partially. The builder will actually do this if this, if, and when it's built. But that design, that look that you're seeing, is one where they're gonna watch their downspouts and they're gonna put in some forms of...
My last question is this. Is, is this, what's the word I wanna use? Is this objective listed in the ordinance when we come to areas like this? Is this something that's listed there so the contractor were, you know, to kinda help ring bells or?
I will take a partial answer on that. It hasn't met the threshold of enough that we would, as a government, regulate it.
You mean across the city? Are you just talking about this item?
This, this small part.
No, no. I was just talking about across the board, period, across the city as an ordinance, not this particular item.
It's part of the design guideline options that you've heard talked about that would be looked at from stormwater. It's one of the ways that you can mitigate stormwater runoff of your...
Okay, all right.
I think to speak to some of the broader policy questions that you're asking, I think that it is our intention, as we get through some of these watershed studies, to come back to this board to provide you options for broader policy discussions on areas that are considered sensitive and that you can impose that uniformly across the city.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Sheila. And we will conclude this with Councilmember Kinston's remarks. We have a motion on the floor. We need to move on, guys. Councilmember Kinston, you had some...
Thank you, Mayor. I'm good. Thank you.
All right. All right, council. We have a motion on the floor about Councilmember Dawkins. It was a second to approve as stated. We've had discussion, council. I'll look to you for your votes on this. Councilmember Woodell, okay. Adam Kirk, motion carries 8 to 2. Those voted in favor. Councilman Davis, Dawkins, Banks, McLaughlin, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, Ingram, and Hare voting in opposition. Councilmember Kinston, Councilmember Woodell. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 9.01, evidentiary hearings for special use permit to construct a duplex Conover Drive. At my new lingo, so I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Newton.
The council, we're moving into the evidentiary hearing. These are the ones that are all for special use permits. You're gonna be hearing three dealing with the housing units and one dealing with the wrecker service. As you recall, these are ones where we go through a little bit different process. And tonight, we have four special use cases that will be presented by the applicant with actions to be taken by the city council. All individuals wishing to speak as a witness should have signed up before the start of the meeting. Is there anyone wishing to speak up that needs to sign up?
Thank you, Ms. Dutton.
All right. We're going to do this swearing or affirming. We need to have one person extra signed up. So, anyone wishing to speak at the hearing must provide competent material, substantial evidence to the city council under oath. Anyone planning on speaking during this evidentiary hearing, please stand and be sworn in by the city clerk to swear or affirm that the testimony you give is true. We're gonna do one at a time. One at a time. The first one that is coming up is...
The only speaker I have signed up for this one is Mr. Kevin Lindsay.
Okay. Sir, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you, sir.
At this point, staff will make its presentation. Mayor Colvin, after that, turning it over to the rest of the script and following through. We have one person as you heard.
Thank you.
Good evening. This is case number 21-23. The applicant is Kevin Lindsay of Crawford Design Company on behalf of the owner, K-A-A-V-U-L-L-C. The request is for a special use permit to construct a duplex in a single-family residential 10 zoning district at address 1812 Conover Drive. The property is approximately .46 acres and is located in District 2. As you can see from the subject property map, the property is located just south of Village Drive. Here is the Cape Fear, Cape Fear Valley Medical Center. And although this lot appears vacant, this is the recently-built Breakthrough Physical Therapy Center. The property is also located just to the west of Owen Drive and to the east of Fargo Drive. According to the zoning map, this area is zoned as single-family residential 10 with some community commercial zoning district located along Owen Drive and some office and institutional zoning districts located to the north. The land use map, the land use plan adopted by city council recommends that this area be developed as low-density residential. Low-density residential is defined as single-family with occasionally duplex and townhomes intermingled. The subject property was, has a currently, currently has a home on it. The home was constructed in 1959 and is approximately 1,247 square feet. The lot is .46 acres. And this area is located in an area that has, that has few single, few owner-resided homes. Mainly, the area is rental properties with some owners still residing in their homes. Again, to the north is the Cape Fear Valley Medical Hospital. Is a single-family residence. To the south is a single-family residence, as well as to the east. According to the site plan, the applicant is proposing to put two duplex, a duplex on the property. Each unit would be approximately 2,000 square feet of livable space. The proposed elevation and floor plan, you can see this is, the home would be, would blend into the neighborhood. Well, the only difference between this proposed elevation is that the applicant is proposing to do a brick facade instead of a wood facade. The home would also have a attached garage as well as outdoor parking. The development standards in the UDLO for a single-family residential dwelling of two to four families requires that there are part, a driveway... to four families requires that there are part, a driveway, only one driveway for, per unit. There are all HVAC and utility connections be located outside view of the adjacent public street and any other design guidelines in the multifamily design standards. While the item must be treated as a new case, our current ordinance provides for a review and recommendation by the zoning commission. Until the ordinance is amended, removing the two-step process, this recommendation is shared. The recommendation is to approve the requested special use permit to make, and as presented by staff and based on the information provided above. The applicant is here to answer any questions. Please hold any questions for staff until after you open your public hearing. Thank you.
Evidentiary hearing.
Evidentiary.
Karen's tricking all of us with this new lingo.
Yeah.
That's alright, I'm with you, Ms. Baptist. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Applicant testimony for the record, with that we'll open the evidentiary hearing. Applicants, for the record, when you, when your name is called, please state your name and address and your relationship to the case. Please provide your testimony. If you are here to offer expert testimony, please share supporting information that qualifies you as an expert and to provide the supporting evidence. With that, Madam Clerk, we call the first speaker.
May we just have one speaker for this item, Mr. Kevin Lindsay?
Good evening, my name is Kevin Lindsay. I live at one thirty Evergreen Court in Pinehurst, North Carolina. I'm a civil engineer working for Crawford Design Company. To receive the special use permit, we must meet eight findings of fact. The first is the special use complies with applicable standards in section thirty dash four point C. It will have a single driveway, a single entrance. Electrical and HVAC equipment will be screened from view from the road, and it shall comply with section thirty dash five G, the two-family design standards, the two-family home design standards. Number two, the special use is compatible with the character of surrounding lands and uses permitted in the zoning districts and surrounding lands. It is zoned SF-ten, and there is, is near, there's nearby retail and other offices and the hospital. The project has the potential of providing additional housing for employees of Cape Fear Valley Medical Center, the surrounding medical community, and other uses in the area. Number three, the special use avoids significant adverse impacts on surrounding lands regarding service delivery, parking, loading, odors, noise, glare, and vibration. The project will have minimal impacts that deviate from current, the current character of the surrounding area. The proposed use is residential and is compatible with surrounding residential community. The proposed duplex will not generate any additional noise or vehicle traffic that is not already typical to the area. The project will be evaluated by the technical review committee and, and meet other local, state, and federal agencies requirements. Item number four, the special use is configured to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts of the proposed use on adjacent lands. The site should comply with city standards, including required screening, drainage, and landscaping. The building will have a slope roof, shutters, and be made of materials commonly found in single-family homes. The total building square footage is similar to that of a two-story residential home. Item number five, the special use avoids significant deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife habitat, scenic resources, and other natural resources. This, this project will be evaluated to ensure that the development is in compliance with the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance and the fact that the slightly higher density allowed here to go to put two units will preserve currently undeveloped land that would have been developed to provide the same residential space. Number six, the special use maintains safe ingress, ingress and egress into, onto the site and safe road conditions around the site. The parcel has access directly onto Conover Drive, which is just south of Village Drive. Village Drive is a major collector that provides access to several major thoroughfares, including Owen Drive, the All-American Expressway, and Robinson Street. This, this will allow, this will be an easy walk to the hospital and may, may allow someone to walk to work instead of having to drive to work. Number seven, the special use allows for protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning district. The property will be developed in a similar nature to the surrounding properties and should not have a negative impact to those property values. Item number eight, the special use complies with all other relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations. The project will meet all applicable standards of the city UDO and the city, state, and federal requirements. Unless you have any questions for me, that's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
We have no further speakers, ma'am.
Alright, with that, we'll close the evidentiary hearing. Councilmember Ingram. Oh, sorry.
I have to, sorry, Mayor, do we have any speakers before us? No, okay. I'd like to move to approve the special use permit to allow the, to allow the development of the single-family ten, SF-ten duplex. My, my apologies, let me restate that. I'd like to move to approve the special use permit to allow the single-family ten at duplex at eighteen twelve Conover Drive as conditions have been identified in, to be current with the Unified Development Ordinance standards as depicted on the attached site plan, as presented by staff based on the standards of the city's development code and evidence presented during this hearing, and that the application is consistent with applicable plans because, one, the development is located in, in the respectable district and is, and the use complies with the findings listed. And, three, the proposed permit is in the public interest because of the proposed special use permit, and it fits with the character of area. Those findings of fact are, one, the special use will comply with all applicable standards Madam Attorney, is that the correct section? Okay, and thirty dash, thirty, thirty dash four C, use specific standards with supporting facts. Number two, the special use is compatible with the character, character of surrounding lands and the uses permitted in the zoning districts of surrounding lands and supporting facts. Three, the special use avoids significant adverse impact on surrounding lands regarding service, delivery, parking, loading, odors, noise, glare, and vibration, to include supporting facts. Number four, the special use is configured to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts of the proposed use on adjacent lands, in addition to supporting facts. Number five, the special use avoids significant deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife habitat, scenic resources, and other natural resources. Number six, the special use maintains safe ingress and egress onto the site and safe road conditions around the site. And number seven, the special use allows the protection of property values and ability of the neighborhood, neighboring lands to develop uses permitted in the zoning district. And eight, the special use complies with all other relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations.
And Councilmember Ingram, the motion as stated, this is the second by Councilman Dawkins. I think we've had adequate discussion. Council, I'll look to you for action on the motion as stated. Y'all okay? Madam Clerk, she's unanimous. Motion carries. Alright, item nine point zero two.
This is the second of the four that you're going to be hearing. This one, for those in the audience who are needing to be sworn in, it's at seven twenty Bragg Boulevard, it's the automotive wrecker service. So anyone speaking at the public hearing must provide competent material substantial evidence to the city council under oath, and as you have heard, it is that information that the city council is relying on as prima facie evidence being presented. Anyone planning on speaking during this evidentiary hearing, please stand, be sworn in by the city clerk to swear or affirm that the testimony you give is true.
Mayor, I just have one speaker signed up for this item, Mr. Jerry Shaw.
Okay.
Mr. Shaw, you can come make your way to the mic. For the record, please state your name and address and your...
Just one, please.
Oh, yeah. Has it, I thought, didn't he issue the offer to everyone at the same time?
No, we did it.
One by one, okay. Alright, you have to be sworn in, sir.
Okay, Mr. Shaw, if you would, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Alright, so before we go to our applicant, we will hear from the staff who will present the information for you so that you're ready then for the evidentiary hearing.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor and council. This property is located at seven twenty Bragg Boulevard. The request is to allow an automotive wrecker service on the property. As you'll see in a moment, there's already a auto repair shop on the property, so it's just be in addition. The property is located here, got Bragg Boulevard, Washington Drive, the Martin Luther King Freeway here, so kind of right in this area, got a hotel across the street. You'll see a couple of other maps detailing some of the things surrounding it in a moment. The property is owned, a community commercial, our heaviest commercial district. Our land use plan calls for a commercial strip redevelopment on this particular property. I'll just give you an idea, the picture at the bottom is looking straight on at this property. The one here in the upper left is from Washington Drive at the intersection, and then this is Washington Drive behind the property. To the east-west, north and south, it's all commercial activities surrounding this property of various natures. This is a, this was supplied by the applicant, just showing there are two, an entrance on both sides of the store, so it gives kind of a, a U-shaped ingress, egress around the property. And then this is also supplied by the applicant, just showing some of the businesses that are around this particular property. Again, the hotel, another automotive, you've got some retail, you've got clubs, you've got a mix of all types of, of commercial around it. Staff feels that this SUP is consistent with applicable plans and implements of policies adopted by the city. The development of this use is allowed in community commercial district and would not affect the overall area. Proposed SUP ensures that new developments compatible with current zoning, UDO, and overall growth pattern in the area, the utilization of an existing previously developed site, and we saw no other factors that should substantially affect public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. If you would, hold off any questions you have for staff until after your public hearing, or evidentiary hearing.
Ready for me? Alright. Good evening, Mr. Shaw. For the record, please state your name and address and your relationship to the case. Also, please provide your testimony. As you provide your testimony, if you're offering expert testimony, please share supporting information that qualifies you as an expert to provide the supporting information that you're giving.
My name is Jerry.
With that, let me open the evidentiary hearing. Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
My name is Jerry Shaw, I live at twelve thirty-three Gotta Street, Fayetteville, two eight three oh one, and I and my wife own Renegade Towing. What we're trying to do here is put our, change our location so that we can have our rotational wrecker service within the Fayetteville city limits. The special use that we're applying for now, it is in compliance with everything, with all the city codes and regulations for it. If you look at code thirty dash four C dot four, section K five, which pertains to automotive wrecker service, we meet all of those qualifications. We're not within two hundred and fifty feet of any residential area, any church area, child daycare center. Any vehicles stored on our premises will be there way less than ninety days, which is usually the standard, and all of the vehicles are being stored to the rear. They are screened in, six-foot wood fence, so there's not a direct line of sight to see any of our operation going by, being on the premises. It's compatible with the character of everything in that area because it is automotive. This site was actually built as an automotive paint and body shop decades ago, and it's been used in that capacity since then. What we're actually doing now as automotive wrecker service actually has less impact on the environment and surrounding area than it did as a paint and body shop. It avoids any impacts to land, air, wildlife habitat, any of that, none of that would be adversely affected by our, by our special use permit. We do currently have multiple points of ingress, egress, so even our day-to-day operations as far as unloading cars, deliveries, anything that we do on our operation is not affected with the surrounding area, neither do we impact them and their operations. They're able to continue because everything we have is confined in our area, in our fence. We don't take down the property value of anything that's any other businesses surrounding us either. Again, it's confined into our area, which is regulated under that code. We have to have a certain amount of screen area for that. The special use allows for protection of property values. We're looking at doing more now, that building is a little dated in the future. We are planning on maybe taking it down, remodeling, doing some different things to it so it kind of meets the aesthetics of everything else in the area. Even though everything there is automotive paint and body, because where we're positioned, we think we can have a little better visual aesthetic. And I just thank you guys for your time today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
May we have no further speakers?
Alright, with that, we'll close the evidentiary hearing. Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move to approve the special use permit to allow the operation of an automotive wrecker service, subject to the conditions identified in and conforming to the current Unified Development Ordinance standards as depicted on the attached plant, site plan, as presented by staff based on the standards of the city's development code and the evidence presented during this hearing, and that the application is consistent with applicable plans because, one, the development is located in community commercial zoning district, two, that the use complies with the findings of list, findings listed, and, three, the proposed permit is in the public interest because the proposed SUP does not fit, does fit with the character of the area. Those findings of fact are approved with, one, the special use will comply with applicable standards in section thirty dash four C, use specific standards with supporting facts, two, the special use is compatible with the character of surrounding lands and the uses permitted in the zoning... is compatible with the character of sup- surrounding lands and the use is permitted in the zoning districts of surrounding lands and supporting facts. Three, the special use avoids significant adverse impact on surrounding lands regarding service, delivery, parking, loading, odor, noise, glare and vibrations, including supporting facts. Four, the special use is configured to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts of the proposed use on adjac- adjacent lands and supporting facts. Five, the special use avoids significant deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife habitat, scenic resources and other natural resources, including supporting facts. Six, the special use maintains safe ingress and egress onto the site and safe road conditions around the site with supporting facts. Seven, the use allows for the protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the use permitted in the zoning district to include supporting facts. And eight, the special use complies with all other relevant city, state and federal laws and regulations to include supporting facts.
Thank you, Councilmember Ingram. Councilmember Woodell, was that a second? What's your last old question? Okay. So, the motion by Councilmember Ingram is the second by Councilmember Woodell. Any discussion on the motion? Is that discussion or y'all vote? That's what I'm talking about. All right, Council, I'll look to you for your vote. All right, Madam Clerk, motion carries, unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Newton, long time no see, sir.
This is the third one.
All right.
You may have a little bit more on the script. So, this is the evidentiary hearing for a special use permit to allow a multifamily or duplex units to be located at five seventy-one Omar Drive. So, anyone who is wishing to speak at this hearing must provide, again, competent material, substantial evidence to the city council under oath. Anyone planning on speaking during this evidentiary hearing, please stand and be sworn in by the city clerk to swear or affirm that the testimony you give is true.
I have two speakers signed up for this item, Mr. Robert Duran and Ms. Cheryl Brunel. Okay, if you could both raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth? So, help you God.
I do.
Thank you.
As you are accustomed to, staff will now provide you the base information, and then you'll have your evidentiary hearing, listening to the applicant first, and then anyone who's opposed. And you'll follow script as, as case proceeds.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Council. Applicant in this case is Mr. Robert Duran of Vulcan Homes. Property is located at five seventy-one Omar Drive. And they are looking, he is looking to build three duplexes on a property currently zoned SF six. Just to give you an idea of the location of the property, it's actually at the intersection of Old Bunce Road and Bunce Road and just south of the Bunce Road intersection with Cliffdale Road. Again, it is zoned SF six. The property just to the north of it is zoned MR five. There are apartments on part of this property. And as you can see, most of the, everything around it is residential. There's some commercial as it gets closer to Cliffdale Road. Our land use plan does call for medium density residential on this property. This is a picture of this property. This is Omar Drive leading in. And then, the proposed duplexes would run along this right-hand side of Omar Drive. Currently, to the south, you've got single-family housing both beside and across the street. Again, to the north is MR five and an apartment complex. This is the proposed site plan of the, for the property. This is Omar Drive coming in. Omar does not only serve this property, but the existing single-family house just to the left here as well. I want to back up just real quickly. It's a little hard to see. It's too far out. But I believe this is a twenty seventeen aerial. And as early as twenty seventeen, there were three mobile homes on this property. They currently are no, no longer there. So, the proposal is three duplexes, six units on this property at this time. Staff felt that the, the SUP is consistent with applicable plans and does implement policies adopted by the city. City's UDO and twenty forty land use plan both support this type of residential use at this location. The uses surrounding the property are a mix that are compatible with those proposed in this special use permit. And the proposed special use is reasonable in the public interest because the proposed zoning fits the character of the overall area. If you would, hold your, any questions you have till, for staff, till after the public hearing. Evidentiary hearing.
All right, got you. All right. For the record, sir, please state your name and address and your relationship to the case. Please provide your testimony. If offering expert testimony, please share supporting information to qualify you as an expert to provide such supporting evidence. And with that, I will open up the evidentiary hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Robert Duran. I live at twelve twenty-seven Birchmere Way, Fayetteville, two eight three one two. I'm the owner of the property and, and work very closely with a designated builder here. That's Daniel Wright. If we have any questions, go out to him this way. And looking at the special use permit, I'll go through the items. Number one, special use complies with all applicable standards in section thirty dash four point C, specifically for two to four family dwellings. And an SF six district must comply with the following standards. No two-four family dwelling lot should be served with more than one driveway on the block face. As you can see, by the schematic, there's, there is, there is one. It'll be serviced by one single interests, entrance off of the roadway. Also, ground-based, wall-mounted electrical equipment, HVAC and other utility connections must be ganged or screened, and they will be. So, they will limit the visibility from the roadway. So, that, the, the two-family dwellings will comply with section three, thirty dash five points G. Number two, special use is compatible with the character of the surrounding lands and that the use is permitted in the zoning and, and area. Currently, the SF six, eh, eh, it's, there is, there is residential, most light and medium density. Where we are making these multifamily duplexes in, near this commercial area, eh, eh, it's fitting with the way that the pro- progress in, in making more available housing for the citizens of Fayetteville. Number three, special use avoids significant adverse impact on the surrounding lands regarding delivery, parking, loading, odors, noise and glare. So, in the, in the construction of these duplexes, we, we were going to limit the amount of pervious material in, in terms of, of driveway and turnaround for, for vehicles by using a, a crush and run. What was also supported is there, there were three mobile homes on this lot originally. The mobile homes are, are gone, but the, the concrete footprints are still there where those mobile homes were. We, we remove up that, that concrete to, to increase the, the water imperviousness in, into the groundwater. Number four, special use is configured to maximize, to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts of the proposed use on, on the adjacent area. So, these, these are beautiful duplexes. We, we've got a few of them going up already inside the city of Fayetteville. Top-of-the-line construction. It, it will be a, a benefit for assets, values of property and providing safe homes for people to live. Number five, special use avoids significant deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife habitat, scenic resources and other natural resources. Currently, the lot is, is basically cleared, right, except for the concrete, which is remaining from where the mobile homes were. We're, we're not deteriorating any, any further into that lot. And we will be removing up some of the concrete where those three mobile homes were already on the area. Number six, special use maintains safe ingress and egress on the site and safe road conditions around the site. Currently, there, there's a DOT-approved ingress and egress on the lot. We will not change that ingress or egress roadway. Seven, special use allows for the protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop the uses permitted in the zoning district. As seen with our current and past projects, our duplexes have increased the values of the neighborhoods by looking at appraised values and subsequent increased tax revenues for, for the city and county. Number eight, special use complies with all other relevant city, state and federal laws and regulations. We will be in compliance with all city, state and federal regulations with the, the building of these homes. Pending any of your questions.
Thank you, sir. Don't necessarily see a question. So, Madam Clerk, we have next speaker.
Yes, sir. Our next speaker is Ms. Cheryl Brunel.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Cheryl Brunel. I live at five eighty-two Omar Drive. I am property directly adjacent to this site proposal. There are a few points that I'm opposed to the proposal for the site build that it currently lists. Originally, this site had three homes and the traffic wasn't too bad. There have been problems. I don't know if any of you are familiar very much with the Bunce and Old Bunce intersection there, but there are an average of twelve a year accidents at that intersection or with a hundred miles or a hundred feet of that intersection on a regular basis. Car versus pole, car versus car. My family's woken up or called in the middle of the day several times to, for emergency services. The shoulder on that road coming from Cliffdale, going down Bunce, straight to Old Bunce, there is no stop. There is no shoulder for anybody to pull over. There is a drainage ditch. That's where waste management asks us to place our wreckage. Currently, that would be, sorry, I don't have better graphics for you. That would be, they would be placing them here, which is the sidewalk currently, where it would be blocking the view for oncoming traffic if they were placed there for any length of period of time. I currently place mine in front of my property here, Down Way, so that we can be sure to see around the corner. And we make sure to remove them as quickly as possible. But we're talking six homes, not three homes now, and we're talking six to twelve cans at a time for pickup. So, we're talking, you know, quite a number there. And that takes away the pedestrians' place to walk on a busy street like that where there are accidents. And I'm concerned about them being able to get by and where would they walk or where would they go, visibility on that corner. I've had trash cans, even on the opposite side of Old Bunce, that get hit and knocked over. And I have to go picking up trash out of the, the ditch on numerous occasions. So, the safety there is of concern. It's not a safe corner, even by the school district standards, because I've asked before when my daughter needed a school bus to get to school because she was, had trouble getting to school because she was physically challenged. And the school wouldn't pick up at that corner. They said it was too dangerous. We, I had to drive her either all the way to school or down over to Seventy-first and Old Bunce for her to be able to get picked up. I'm concerned about them being family homes. The, the driveway, the Omar is only twenty feet wide. And with bringing your trash cans down that street, children trying to play, people pulling in off the street because there's no shoulder, they pull in because their car runs out of gas, they have a flat, they've been pulled in there for tickets. That interferes with us being able to get into the driveway or out. Their plans show nothing about a turnaround. And he even said that there wouldn't be one for the mailman to turn around, for deliveries, a place for people to park for visitors, because we're increasing it from, including my home, that's seven families, it's fourteen cars, plus visitors on this little teeny street going into this big intersection. And then, I'm also curious, have they taken into account the changes that are supposed to be happening to Bunce Road, to wherein our street is supposed to become a dead-end street, where they're supposed to be cutting off Old Bunce Road and moving Bunce down and over some to where it's gonna, I don't know when that's gonna happen. I was notified about it some time ago. But that actually might improve the traffic and the accident, you know, conditions or something. But at this time, I don't see it handling that number of traffic, especially if they're families and their children. Where are the children going to play with those big homes smushed up against the fence and the driveway and other, you know, situations like that? Those are my primary concerns because I am not against people living there. It's a nice area. There's not a lot close by. My daughter and I, you know, they don't have a park down the street to walk to or, you know, anything. They've got the new housing across the way. That's the Habitat for Humanity homes that they just built. But crossing Old Bunce or Bunce is not something that I want my child to be doing anytime. So, the safety of the pedestrians, the safety of the public, the safety of the families moving in there, and the ability for people to come in, to turn around for deliveries, for emergency services, even for the mail, has not been addressed. And these are things that I would like to be addressed and are of extreme concern because I've had property damage by people pulling onto my property, turning around with just those three mobile homes there. And the concrete that they're saying they're going to move away, a concrete slab for a single mobile home, because these were all single wides, versus a duplex, they're putting in six in place of three. So, they're adding more concrete. They're not taking more out. They're, they're taking the three concrete pads out that had the three single mobile homes, but they're putting in three duplexes, which is six homes. And the volume is in addition, not a subtraction from the, the concrete that's going there. I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
May we have no further speakers?
All right, with that, we will close the evidentiary hearing. Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor wants to move to approve the special use permit and to allow the operations and of auto.
Mr. Banjo Head, something?
Yes, sir. There is a typographical error on your page. And so, I think that you put it up on the screen. And so, this would be for requests to allow a two to four unit dwellings to be located at five seven one Omar Drive. And then, I think the rest of it on the screen. Is that correct, Craig?
All right, Councilmember Wright.
Yes, and the development is located. Yes, and the development is located in the Community Commerce Zoning District. That the use complies with the findings, the listings. Three, the proposed permit is in the public interest because the proposed SUP does fit with the character of the area. If approved, this special use permit shall become effective within the approval of of the order of the findings by the City Council. The SUP shall expire one year from the effective date if the building permit is not issued within a timely manner. And also, it meets the eight findings of facts. Number one, special use complies with all applicable standards in Section 30-4C, use special standards also with supporting facts. Number two, special use is compatible with the character of surrounding lands and the use permitted with the zoning districts of surrounding lands, also with supporting facts. Number three, the special use avoids significant adverse impacts on surrounding lands regarding service, delivery, parking, loading, odors, noise, glare, and vibrations with supporting facts. Number four, the special use is configured to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts of proposed use of adjacent lands with facts. Number five, the special use avoids significant deterioration of water and air resources, wildlife, habitats, scenic resources, and other natural resources along with facts. Number six, special use maintains safe ingress and egress into the site and safe road conditions around the site. That's with the facts. The special use allows for protection of property value and ability of neighboring lands to develop and use permits in zoning districts with facts. And number eight, special use complies with all other relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations also with facts.
And Councilmember Wright, Councilmember, sir? Councilmember Ingram, is that your light for a second? Okay, all right. So, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second? Councilmember Wright's motion. Second by Councilmember Dawkins, discussion phase, Councilmember Ingram.
Thank you. I had a question about the parking, travel, safety that was mentioned by one of the speakers. If somebody could come up and talk to me about that and how we are addressing that.
We can't hear you, sir.
That's a, is, Mr. Manager, is that an NC DOT road?
Omer? No, I don't believe it, I don't believe it is. Both of the Bunce roads are, but Omer is not.
Okay. Have we been in discussion with NC DOT regarding this item in terms of the concerns? As it relates to the traffic?
I've discussed it with DOT briefly and they said that it complies, but I don't know any further beyond that. It complies with DOT standards to add the duplexes for the traffic inflow and outflow. Now, we do have an amended site plan here and we did add on the back, it's a three-point turn. It's not a full circle turnaround, but as I said in the other meeting, I intended to add a turnaround. It's not a circle turnaround, but like I said, it's a three-point turnaround. And I'm sorry, I wasn't able to get it to you in time for everybody to have it on screen. But I did feel like it was necessary to have a turnaround myself. I wholeheartedly agree that vehicles should be able to get in and turn around.
Okay, so you're familiar with the traffic in that area?
I've traveled, I've lived in Hope County, Cumberland County all my life, so yes, ma'am, I've been in the area a lot. And, you know, with the city of Fayetteville, there's a lot of traffic in Fayetteville, there really is. But, you know, with urban development, there, it's fairly consistent.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Davis.
Could you repeat that again? So, you actually made an amendment to the site plan? That reflects a three-point turn?
Yes, sir, on the end, and I apologize that I didn't get it into you in time. I just got it back from my surveyor this morning, so I wasn't able to turn it in. But at the end, it's a T, almost like our other duplexes where it has a T at the end of the driveway. There's a T there, so you can pull in, back up, and come back out. Because I agreed, I agreed with the lady here that, you know, that it was necessary.
And for the city manager, just, I apologize. As it pertains to some of the problems that the young lady highlighted, which in my opinion have little or nothing to do with the development when you talk about trash cans being placed there. If trash cans placement there is an issue, then it's just there is an issue. Is there anything the city can do to fix that? Is anyone looking at something we could look at? Because it was, it's an issue for her in her house there evidently.
We will be happy to take a look at that and follow up, but quite often on some of these roads where you don't have sidewalks. It can be a real challenge.
Sidewalks.
And, yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Kinston.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Actually, Councilmember Davis already addressed one of the issues with the trash cans on the side of the road. Because actually, I travel that way actually to work, so I've seen what happens with the garbage cans there. Also, it wasn't mentioned that just shortly down the street from that is the Recreation Center. So, I do want to make sure that the understanding, you said that the turnaround to go into?
No, to, at the very end of the properties. Where the duplexes are on the back side of the duplex, I've made a T where you can do a three-point turn to come back out. So, in case emergency vehicles or mail carriers or package delivery or anything comes in, that they don't have to turn in her yard or they don't have to try to drive in somebody's driveway to actually turn around.
Okay. And so, the other question is, as you're coming down Bunce Road and it goes to that curve before you head out to Clifdale Road, generally what happens sometimes as there is accidents there is they end up into offering itself. Is there gonna be any kind of, anything to indicate the changes there per se?
Not necessarily. With DOT, we kind of have to maintain what's there to adhere to DOT regulations. We need to leave it as is for DOT. We can't, without going through DOT, we can't make any changes there. I mean, except for being actually able to, you can see into the property clearly from the road. Except for actually being able to see into the property and see the cars, there's not a lot, we can't change roadside.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, council, there's a motion on the floor by Councilmember Wright. It was a second by Councilmember Dawkins. We've had discussion, I'll look to you for action on this. Madam Clerk, motion carries seven to three. Those voting in favor, Councilman Dawkins, Davis, Wright, Colvin, Jensen, Hare, Waddell. The vote in oppose, Councilmember Banks, McLaughlin, Ingram, and Kinston. All right, Mr. Newton?
The fourth and final SUP that you have this evening is that on Elvira. Anyone speaking at the hearing must provide competent material, substantial evidence to the City Council under oath. Anyone planning on speaking during this evidentiary hearing, please stand, be sworn in by the city clerk to swear or affirm that the testimony you give, plan to give, is true.
Mayor, I have three speakers for this item.
Yeah?
Mr. Jonathan Charleston, Ms. Lori Epler, and Mr. Charles Morris.
You need to swear them in, you said?
If you could please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. This is an evidentiary hearing to allow 10 townhomes to be built in a single-family six district located 21222118 Elvira Street. Just to give you an idea of the location, this is Elvira here just before its intersection with Bragg Boulevard. Currently, it is zoned SF6 and so is everything basically around it. On our land use map, it is called for medium-density residential, which this does fit into that type of category, the proposed use. This is how the property currently looks. It has already been cleared. And then, just surrounding the property is mainly, mainly different types of multifamily. There is a few single-family residents still in that area as well, but mainly apartments and duplexes kind of surround it. This is the proposed site plan of what they're looking to do. Again, it's 10 townhome units, kind of five in each cluster here with the parking in the middle of the two groups of clusters. And then, this is a proposed elevation for the five clusters, for the two clusters of five. The SUP we feel is consistent with applicable plans and implements policies adopted by the city, that the proposed SUP implements policies adopted in the Unified Development Ordinance, that the development of this use is allowed in single-family six district and will not detach from the overall area. That the proposed SUP ensures that new development is compatible with current zoning, UDO, 2040 land use plan, and overall growth pattern of the area and that there are no other factors which substantially affect public health, safety, morals, or general welfare. If you would, please hold any questions you may have for staff till after your evidentiary hearing.
Thank you, sir. Again, anyone wishing to speak, my apologies. For the record, please state your name, your call to speak, name and address, and relationship to the case. Please provide your testimony. For offering expert testimony, please share supporting information to qualify you as an expert to provide supporting evidence. And with that, I will open up the evidentiary hearing. Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
Our first speaker is Mr. Jonathan Charleston.
It's Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. I'm here on behalf of Floyd Properties. Along with me are Lori Epler, who will qualify as an expert, and Charles Morris, who represents the owner. The points that I'd like to make tonight, without being redundant and holding the council to unnecessary testimony, is just to make a point that this whole request for a special use permit is a result of the impact of the Uniform Development Ordinance, the UDO. So, essentially, what happened is this property was originally zoned as R6 prior to the UDO. And as R6, the property owner could develop exactly what we intend to request, what we're requesting from City Council tonight, which is to put these multifamily units, these apartment units on the site at the density set forth in the application. The City Council had a similar case to come up in 2020. That case was P2047F and that involved a river bluff development out near Cape Fear River. And City Council considered the same set of facts. It was a development that was originally zoned by the city as R6, which would have allowed for the development of multifamily. In that case, we sought to have the development of townhouses. But City Council considered this at its, this particular case. P, again, just for the record, P2047F. City Council considered this case on December 8th and unanimously approved the special use permit to allow the development of the property from R6, I mean, the rezoning from R6 to single-family six, which is the new zoning classification in the UDO. Couple of things I'd like to point out is, one, in the application, it states clearly that the special use is compatible with the existing uses. You heard Mr. Harmon talk about the fact that it, the surrounding uses include substantially multifamily with some scattering of single family. The special use is self-contained and will not interfere with adjoining properties. The special use's project is inward-facing and allows maximum buffering from neighboring properties, so, again, minimizing any impact. Again, the open space requirements are achieved. There are no scenic resources existing. The traffic count on Elvira Street is minimum and the driveway to the site allows for every controlled movement onto and off the site. So, again, it allows for safe ingress and egress. And the special use, we believe, will also promote other revitalization in the area. And there, again, there are several multifamily developments in the area. And finally, the special use complies, if granted, will comply with all relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations. Now, as a part of the requirements for considering a special use permit, there are eight findings of fact that City Council has to make. We believe that finding a fact, number one, is satisfied to the extent that the special use complies with all applicable standards in the code. Finding a fact, number two, regarding the compatibility with the character of surrounding lands. Again, you've heard that the area adjacent to the, this site is comprised primarily of multifamily residential with some single family. So, this will not change the character of the area. Finding the fact, number three, whether or not the special use avoids significant adverse impact on surrounding lands. Again, according to the site plan, which is a part of the application, the project will be developed similar to the other surrounding properties. And of course, there will be minimum other adverse impacts such as noise and et cetera. This project will be evaluated by a technical review committee and will meet other state and federal requirements. Finding the fact, number four, the special use is configured to minimize adverse effects, including visual impacts. Again, the application and site plan being considered, the project will be a residential development similar in nature to the surrounding developments. This has been confirmed again by staff as in the preceding findings. There is no impact as causing a deterioration of water and air resources. Again, according to the application and site plan, these properties will be in compliance and meet the requirements of the UDO. Stormwater treatment will exist on-site and the project will be connected to public water and sewer. Finding the fact, number six, the special use maintains safe ingress and egress. We spoke to that earlier and the application and site plan support this finding. The special use allows for the protection of property values and the ability of neighboring lands to develop to the uses permitted. Again, according to the application and site plan, the property will be developed in a manner not inconsistent with the surrounding properties and will not have a negative impact on the property values. And I might add, there's been no evidence to suggest that the property values will be adversely impacted. Finally, the applicant will meet all applicant. Finally, the, the applicant will meet all applica, applicable standards and conditions. And this special use, we believe, and would argue, complies with all other relevant city, state, and federal laws and regulations. As part of this presentation, ladies and gentlemen, I would ask that the following be made a part of the official record, that being the, the application of the owner, the site plan of the owner, and the staff report and recommendation that's contained with it, with your materials. I might also add, ladies and gentlemen, that City Council take notice of and include as part of the evidence, case number P twenty-four-seven F, and the findings of City Council in that play, in that case, only to the extent that that case stands for the proposition that City Council has considered before making adjustments in the, with respect to special use permits, when the UDO has effectively downgraded the ability of the property owner to develop their property to its highest and best use. I also have, for any questions that you might have, we have Ms. Epler here tonight that can address any technical questions or may fill in some of the gaps that I had, but we're available to answer any questions Mayor, you and City Council might have regarding this application.
Thank you, Mr. Charleston, I believe you certainly covered a wide scope of information, so I did have Councilman Dawkins had your light on, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to wait till after, and then I'm ready to make a motion.
All right, Councilmember Ingram, yours was a part of, okay, Councilmember here.
Mayor, just, I think this is probably more for the attorney. With this new process that we're doing, we're always gonna have to read the, the findings, since the findings are already read and from the very beginning that, I'm just trying to find out, because I know this is a new way that we're doing it now, this evidentiary hearing, but must the findings be read? I think we've, what, done four or five, and each one had to read? Just a question, so I better understand, to clarify, thank you.
Yes, sir, you were always supposed to do that, but recognize that the council did not always do that.
Yes, we didn't. Okay, well, then, thank you.
Know better, you do better, right?
I know now, don't I? Okay, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Attorney McDonald.
Councilman Dawkins.
Ready to go, Mr. Mayor?
Waiting on you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, so if there are no other questions, you may close the evidentiary hearing.
Certainly, because I think Mr. Charleston just offered them as an option if there were questions for technical purposes, correct? All right, so with that, we'll close the evidentiary hearing, Councilman Dawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the recommendation and approval of the zoning commission and the staff, I make a motion to approve to allow townhome development of single-family six zoning district located at twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-one, eighteen Elvira Street, and being one-point-two-six acres property of Floyd Properties, because it meets the eight finds and facts without objection, I won't read them, Ms. City Attorney. And the special use permit is consistent with the applicable plans and the Uniform Development Ordinance.
Is the motion by Councilmember Dawkins, is the second by Councilmember Ingram? Counsel, any discussion on the motion? If not, I'll look to you for your votes. All right. Madam Clerk, motion carries unanimously, all right. Yeah, with that, counsel, let's take a five-minute recess, we'll come back, pick up public hearings.
Okay, okay. Oh, oh, yeah, you talking about when we on the break?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, counsel, we will, one, two, three, we'll call our meeting back to order. Item ten point zero of the public hearing, individuals designed to speak at the public hearings must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before seven PM this evening. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for each side of the issue at the public hearing. Individual speakers will be limited to three minutes each, unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson is designated, which case the spokesperson may use the entire fifteen minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, you, you then be acknowledged, please clearly state your name and address for the record, may then begin to address the city council. And when the light turns from green to amber, means you have thirty seconds remaining, and at the end of your allotted time, the timer will ring. Mr. Hewitt, are you the staff presenter?
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Tonight, we are here for the required public hearing on the recommended budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two that begins on July first. The budget was released to the City Council on May sixth and formally presented to you and the public on May tenth. The document has been available for public review in the office of the city clerk and on the city's website. The proposed budget provides two-hundred-and-thirty-nine million dollars in total expenditures across all funds, with a hundred-and-eighty-seven million dollars in general fund expenditures. This spending plan represents a two-point-two percent increase across all funds and a four-point-four percent increase in the general fund over FY twenty-one's adopted budget. On the screen in front of you are the various component funds which make up our, our all funds budget, general fund, solid waste, transit, stormwater, airport, PWC assessment fund, LEOs or law enforcement, forfeiture separation, and emergency telephone system fund, parking fund, central business tax district, and Lake Valley MSD. For the general fund, it's an increase of seven-point-eight billion dollars, with personnel up one-point-six. A solid waste fund is virtually no change, however, the contract services decreased from six-hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars due to transition to bi-weekly recycling. The transit fund is an increase of eight-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand, with personnel up three-hundred-and-nine. And stormwater is down eight-ninety-five, primarily for transfers for capital projects, it's down two-point-nine and offset of one-hundred-and-five thousand increases to personnel. Some of this we covered at the presentation of the budget on May tenth, as well as in our work session last week. In preparing the budget, one of the things that the staff does is take a look at the council's strategic plan, and as councils are aware, you have six goals, and the budget is built around these goals, as well as continuation of all city services. One of the things I think that primarily attracts the attention of many of the speakers at the public hearing in years past, has been looking at any of the revenue highlights. And the Advailorn property taxes, the general property tax rate is proposed to remain the same at forty-nine-point-nine-five cents per one-hundred dollars of property valuation. We've seen moderate growth in taxable property values of the current fiscal year. The central business tax district rate is proposed to remain the same at ten cents per one-hundred dollars of property valuation, and we are proposing, well, it actually will be abolished, the Lake Valley Drive Municipal Service District will be abolished effective June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-one. Additional revenue highlights, the residential solid waste fee is proposed to remain the same at two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per single-family residential unit. There's no change in the stormwater fee, which is currently six dollars per month per equivalent residential unit, or ERU, and there's no proposed increases to transit fares or other significant fees increases. So looking at where we are tonight, the notice of required public hearing on the budget was published in the Federal Observer on Thursday, May thirteenth. We've received comment on proposed budget through tonight's public hearing and by written comment through midnight tomorrow, on May twenty-fifth, at publiccomments@ci.fay.nc.us. Additionally, the City Council has another budget work session, session scheduled for Thursday, May twenty-seventh, and it is our hope that council will adopt the budget, the CIP, the TIP, the strategic plan, and the associated fee schedule on Monday, June fourteenth.
Mayor, as this is a public hearing, I stand ready to answer questions, or you can open up the public hearing, sir, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, please call your first speaker.
And we have four speaker, five speakers signed up for this item. Our first speaker is Mr. James Thomas.
Mr. Thomas, are you there?
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, James Thomas, um, I'm a, you remember our law for Fayetteville, and, um, I'm calling against the budget, and if you've been paying attention to the news since twenty-twenty, we have seen that the police have proven themselves to be as futile as ever, and with that being said, we have to defund the police. Too many children and innocent people have been abused and murdered by excessive force and police brutality, as Travis mother, Travis motherman's mom, as Shakira McNair's family, as Megan McPherson, how they feel about it. As someone that has lived in Fayetteville all my life, except college, I've seen my friends have passed away due to police force in Fayetteville, and they chalk it up to qualified immunity, and I begin to ask myself, how many of my friends gonna die in Fayetteville before I let the officials show us that they give a damn? And that's the same question I would like to pose to you all. How many more dead black men and women do you have to see on the news? How many body cam footages does it take to see on your Facebook timeline? How many black mothers are gonna have their children taken too soon by the hand of the Fayetteville Police Department? How many more people are gonna get killed during wellness checks? I shouldn't have to lose my life because I feel sad today. And birds of a feather flock together, so your lack of attention that you've been showing, your lack of change, that shows that you don't even care enough to wash the blood on your hands. Majority of you are black, so please take what I'm saying, and when you go home, look at your black children, your black family, and imagine how would you feel if an officer decided that one day they was bold enough to put his faith in qualified immunity? No way police administrative pay should be that high. Our schools need funding, our black communities need better resources, people are homeless in the streets, and you all have the power to do all that. And there ain't nothing to do but make it happen. With that being said, defund the police and police administrative pay, and invest into homelessness and our public schools and our community. Thank you. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Our next speaker is Ms. Kathy Greggs.
Ms. Greggs, you there?
Yes, good evening, my name is Kathy Greggs, I, uh, my address is four-six-zero-seven Woodline Drive, Fayetteville, North Carolina, two-eight-three-one-four. I'm coming tonight to talk about the proposed budget for twenty-twenty-two for our city of Fayetteville. I want to first thank you for allowing us to even speak on this. I do not agree with being this, this being passed, based on the facts of kind of sort of like what Mr. James Thomas just said, when it comes to giving more money and funding to the police, such as increases of salaries, when we have other issues like schools and investing in resources for the community, such as domestic violence, sexual assault shelters, more rehabilitation areas for the people here in the city of Fayetteville. I also did observe that there is gonna be some funding, only four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for sidewalks for the city, however, we need way more money for sidewalks, and we just feel that defunding the police will assist that. And taking that funding and bringing it over to the sidewalks of the people, because the people- Um, and taking that funding and bringing it over to the sidewalks of the people because the people pay the taxes. So this money should be used for the people and what they need. Um, and we just feel because of the crime rate being so high in our city that there is nothing on this budget that shows that this will assist with crime rate going down. Um, and it also doesn't show that it will this with mental health response. Cause I see that the word funds will be used for mental health, but it doesn't say a certain amount will be used. So I really think this budget should not be passed and it should be probably gone back to the committee and be looked at again and probably getting some more public hearings. And I do appreciate your time and you guys have a great evening. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, madam clerk, next speaker?
Our next speaker is Mister Chilenco Hurst.
Mister Hurst, are you there? You said he's there, Jennifer?
He was, but he is not.
Okay.
Okay. Our next speaker is Mister Manuel Diaz.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Mister Diaz?
Uh, good evening again. Thank you, city council, for allowing me to speak. My name is Manuel Mejia Diaz and I live at fifty-eight forty-four Chase and Rich Drive, Fayetteville, two, eight, three, one, four. I'm here in opposition of this budget. To keep it short, I fail to understand how different department, city departments do not have sufficient funds for their equipment or for additional training. These departments are already receiving millions of dollars, but are relatively only receive a miniscule amount compared to those departments. There should be more direct investments for our decaying infrastructure, our homeless, and for our recently released people from jail so they can have an opportunity to move forward as citizens of our community. There should be more direct investment and opportunities for people, for people rather than providing more money to already huge budgets. Thank you for your service. Good night.
Thanks, sir.
Our next speaker is Mister Sean McMillan.
Mister McMillan, are you there? Mister McMillan, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Sean McMillan, sixty twenty-four Golden Rain Drive. No, we are not in agreement with the twenty twenty-one budget as proposed. Bottom line upfront, we're repeating the call first made last year to allocate no less than one percent of proposed F P D budget in order to establish independent oversight of the Fayetteville Police Department in the form of a civilian police oversight authority, C P O A. Almost a year ago, on the eighth of June, twenty twenty, at the last budgetary public comment, we asked you to move beyond words of performative displays of sympathy and enact policy that substantively answered widespread cause for police reform and social justice. Joshua Oxendine, Najdi Hagens, Lawrence Graham, Shakur McNair, Trevor Smotherman, Kevin Grissette, Adrian Roberts, John Hare, Wendy Sutton. These are all people who lived here in Cumberland County and were either killed by law enforcement or died while in custody. There were people for whom there was not an impartial and independent process to address allegations of misconduct or use of excessive force. Once approved and implemented, the C R B, which is now in committee at the General Assembly, will be comprised of volunteers who can devote part-time attention to examining allegations of misconduct and excessive use of force. Uh, we need leaders with the moral leadership and conviction to resource and stand up a C P O A. Uh, in a special council meeting last July, we provided this council with a detailed plan for C P O A. We propose that you designate no less than one percent of the F P D budget to hire an executive director, two investigators, and an admin clerk. Nothing but your own refusal at this point is stopping you from allocating the resources for C P O A, i.e. hiring the staff, allocating the operational expenses, the training, establishing support structures, office rental, et cetera. C P O A will examine F P D and Cumberland County interactions with citizens across the continuum of justice, making findings and recommendations for improvement and life-saving innovate innovations. The C P O A will also shepherd development of the C R B. The staff will be trained and credentialed by N A C O. Once fully established, the C P O A will be independent of the F P D and allow citizens the ability to lodge complaints with a body other than the F P D Internal Affairs Office. For months, Mayor Colvin has muddied the water by suggesting that establishing a C P O A is completely in the purview of state legislatures. The fact is that the demand signal and the details of the plan originate from the council. They must originate from the council, just as the demand for the C R B did. Another fact is that when morally grounded councils want to see police fetish or fight on behalf of their citizens, i.e. in Elizabeth City or Greensboro, they actually do. We repeat calls to allocate no less than one percent of that F P D budget to resource the C P O A. Do what's right because it is right, not because you want to perform for people who have power over you. Have the moral courage and intestinal fortitude to enact substantive policy change now. Put your money where your performative mouth hasn't become comfortable dwelling in.
Thank you. Madam clerk?
Um, is Mister Chilenco?
Uh, Mister Harris, did you make it back?
Then we have no further speakers, ma.
All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, no action needed. All right. Item ten point zero two? Uh, city's authorization education revenue bonds by the Public Finance Authority. Who's the presenter on this item? Mister Charleston, this is your item, sir? All right.
Excuse me. Is his mic on? Cause I can't hear him.
All right, thank you. Mayor, uh, ladies and gentlemen, city council, uh, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Capital Encore Academy, uh, which is the charter school right down here on Hay Street. Before I get going tonight, I'd like to just take a moment, uh, to, uh, introduce, uh, to city council, Brittany Johnson. She's a new lawyer that will be working on some of the public finance matters here. Brittany, if you'll just stand up for one second. Great. Brittany is a Fayetteville native, uh, graduated high school here, uh, master's in public administration, taught math, award-winning schoolteacher in Charlotte that came back home. So want to welcome her to our team. Uh, tonight, uh, you have before you, uh, a request for the city to authorize the issuance of education revenue bonds by the Public Finance Authority of Wisconsin. The Public Finance Authority of Wisconsin is a public authority that issues bonds essentially for charter schools in all fifty states. They're authorized by statute to do that. So just like we're having a hearing here, there, there's also a hearing authorizing these bonds in Wisconsin. The United States Tax Code requires, among other things, that the local, uh, political subdivision, uh, in the jurisdiction where the issuer, uh, or the activity resides, is required to have a public hearing. That's what the T E F R A hearing is. And, and ladies and gentlemen, you recall, again, uh, I think, uh, two years ago, you did the same thing, same T E F R A hearing for the Capital Encore Academy. So what we're proposing to talk a little bit about the project, this project is a not to exceed ten million dollar bond issuance to purchase and renovate improvements for a new charter school to be used to house grade seven through twelve, located at two hundred Mason Street. That's where the, the new facility is. And also the acquisition of an adjacent parking lot at three oh two Arch Street and three twenty-one Arch Street. I might mention that in the, uh, the notice of public hearing, uh, that was published regarding, uh, uh, this matter did not mention three twenty-one Arch Street. And the reason it didn't is because three twenty-one Arch Street and three, and three oh two Arch Street are really, um, uh, one address, but it's, uh, in the public records, it's two separate tracts of land. Uh, under the regs, uh, there's a thing known as an insubstantial deviation so that we believe that if it's involved the same area, that it doesn't require, uh, that level of specificity in the notice. But I did want to bring it to the council's attention because we intend to make sure that that, uh, three twenty-one Arch Street is referenced in the actual resolution that if you authorize this, that the mayor will sign. I've spoken with the city's council about this. Um, and she, uh, concurs that we can do this under, under T E F R A. So there's, uh, uh, two bonds that, uh, two series of bonds that will be issued. Uh, one is the proposed education revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-one A, which is a tax exempt bond, and a taxable education revenue bond, series twenty twenty-one B. Again, uh, these bonds are not to exceed ten million dollars. The important point, uh, to raise is that the city will have no liability whatsoever for the repayment of principal or interest on the bonds and nor will the, the faith and credit or the taxing power of the city be implicated by, uh, authorization of the resolution in connection with this T E F R A hearing. Uh, therefore, I respectfully request that the, um, city council, uh, uh, authorize the resolution that's attached in your package, uh, with respect to both the series A and series B bonds. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Uh, Councilmember Ingram. All right, council, councilmember Waddell, and then Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. City manager, is there another? I asked this question when we had this dialogue before. I believe I remember the answer, but I want you to refresh my memory. Is there another body that this could come before other than the city council?
And ma'am, I apologize, I don't remember my response then.
I don't, I don't right remember it either.
But I think that given that it is in the downtown that, you know, and I'll go back to Mister Charleston or the city attorney and ask, reflect that question.
Well, the, thank you, uh, Councilwoman Waddell. Uh, the fact of the matter is because the, the project is located in the city and the statute says that, uh, the political subdivision where the project will be located is the one that, uh, holds the T E F R A hearing.
So it's also located in the county. So I guess most specifically, my question is, are we the only body that's permitted to hear this? Or could another, could the, could the county commissioners have heard this?
Well, I, I, uh, it could very well be the case. But what I will tell you is I do a, a lot of housing deals in Wake County in Raleigh. And the city of Raleigh always does the T E F R A hearings in the city of Raleigh, same thing for Durham. And it's historically in the city of Fayetteville, uh, that's the way it's been done. Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um, just a point of clarification. So what we're basically talking about is the Encore Capital, um, Academy is expanding to a middle school. Is that correct?
Mayor Protem, no, they're a- actually expanding to have high school.
Oh, okay. So they do middle school now.
That is correct.
I apologize. So what we're dealing with right here that the Encore Academy is expanding to a high school so they can start from kindergarten all the way up to high school?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Uh, and I did just want for a point of clarification, Mister Charleston, um, these bonds are not the city issuing the bonds, so therefore it's not our credit, not our obligation. It's simply the host for the, the issuance of the bonds to comply with, uh, the regulations to issue them because it's in, in our jurisdiction.
That is correct. The city of Fayetteville has no responsibility whatsoever for these bonds. The city of Fayetteville is not the issuer of the bonds. The issuer of the bonds is the Public Finance Authority of Wisconsin. And essentially, this is much like a P W C financing where the city issues the bonds, because P W C doesn't have the authority. The city issues the bonds and then loans the proceeds with the loan agreement to P W C to finance whatever the operations are that they seek to do it for. That's an example, uh, that is akin to what we're doing in this case. The Public Finance Authority in Wisconsin is the issuer. It's a, it's a, uh, it's a government authority in Wisconsin that has the authority to issue bonds in all fifty states. It will issue bonds, uh, and then it will loan the proceeds, uh, from that issuance to the Capital Encore Academy. But the city has no role other than what's required by the tax code to hold a T E F R A hearing.
All right, council, don't see any other questions? entertain motion? Uh, member, uh, councilmember Ingram?
Uh, thank you. I'd like to move to adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance of bo, of the bond, um, attached here to as exhibit B.
Is the motion by? Mister Mayor? I need to close the public hearing. He's been so many. Lifting his thing.
Do I need to restate?
Please, ma'am.
Okay, um, I'd like to move that the city council adopt the resolution authorizing the issuance of the bond attached here to as exhibit B.
All right, is the motion by councilmember Ingram is a second by councilmember Wright to approve. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel, I'll look to you for your vote. All right. Madam clerk, motion carries nine to one. Those voting in oppose, councilmember Waddell. All right, item ten point zero three? Housing urban development action plan. Mister Colling, good evening. This is what you presented to us at the last bidding, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct.
You plan to re-present it again?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Uh, just very brief, I, uh, I cut it down a little bit for you as well. Um, so before I get started, uh, Mayor, city council, my name's Chris Colling. I'm the director of economic and community development for the city.
All right, you're the new director. Congratulations, man.
Yeah, gotta, gotta beg for it.
So now we can stop being nice since you're not the interim mayor.
If the past year's been nice, bring it.
You don't want to see what mean is, right?
Uh, so just a, a quick reminder here, um, we're talking about the community development block grant and home investment partnership. These are two grants that we get every year. Fayetteville's an entitlement community, so we get the money by nature of our population and several other census factors. Uh, C D B G money is all about benefiting low and moderate income persons. There's also some community redevelopment activities with removing slum and blight that we can do. Home is, uh, very complicated in detail, but big picture, it's about a create, creating affordable housing. So this is a partnership that we do where we either directly fund or loan money to developers to help develop affordable housing throughout the community. So our, uh, anticipated grants for next year, uh, C D B G, we're looking at one point six million dollars for home. It's nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Um, we've got some program income from activities that where we loan money out and people repay us over time. So all in, we're looking at new money coming in the door at three and a half million for both programs. Uh, we have a little bit of prior year money left over, about nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. A lot of that has to do with, uh, programs that kind of slowed down during COVID. Uh, so all in, we're looking at repurposing four point four million dollars, including the three and a half million of new resources. Uh, as a reminder of, uh, um, how we planned this money out, we've got it broken out into several of our strategies here. So this is your five-year strategic plan for how you spend these HUD monies. Um, so the economic development strategy bumped up a little bit by three percent, community development by three percent. Uh, the housing strategy up a little bit with four percent. Homeless strategy is where we took advantage of that cap that we had. Um, and so we went up to eighteen percent. Special needs is a new category with our new strategic plan. Um, and then administration went up six percent. On the home funds, uh, our community housing development organization, so that is, uh, a, a certain type of charitable foundation that is community-based. Um, in this case, it's Habitat for Humanity. That went, uh, to down by forty percent. Um, we're coming off of the, the big climb of Oak Ridge. And so that's why we're seeing that go down a little bit over time. And as we build those new projects, we'll start planning budgets for future years. And as we build those new projects, we'll start planning budgets for future years. Multi-family housing loans, we bumped up by 50%. We've got a lot of interest in developing affordable housing here in the community. So we wanted to lay some money out so that we could partner with those organizations. Stay tuned, the state makes its awards later this summer, and we'll be coming back and talking to you about some of those housing projects. The other program we have is homeowner occupied rehab. That went down $90,000 this year. But again, due to COVID, we had $300,000 that we were unable to spend during the time where we didn't go in folks' houses. A lot of the folks that we rehab are people who would have been, or who are, you know, in that, in that high-risk category. So we were extra careful in getting back to work there. Administration and planning went down a little bit. That was basically just some rounding adjustments and a little bit of budgeting changes. So at this time, this is not any new information for you all, but we do have to have a public hearing. So I ask you to open the public hearing.
Thank you, sir. With that, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
May we have no speakers for this item?
All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, I'll look to you for action or questions. Or is this the public hearing, so any action required?
Yes, I will need you to, after you do the public hearing, to vote on the item.
So you need it to done.
And the language is in the C-CAM there. It says approve it to send to HUD. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Councilmember Ingram here, Waddell.
So I, I'm interested in a couple of things. I'm interested in knowing first, how possible can we get more money to our Chodos? Habitat for Humanity has been doing a lot of work, especially over the course of COVID. And I know they put in a request for a certain amount, but they were not awarded a certain amount. And in the communities that they are developing, and more specifically, like our B Street community, we're seeing some turnover in certain behaviors of that community because of the development. And I just don't think we would be a good store to those that are putting sweat equity dollars into our community to not really give them necessarily what they're asking for. Now, I do understand we can't fund a whole project, but I do know that they are using their own dollars as well. So I'm just looking for how we can get our Chodos more money to continue developing in a lot of these areas that are of concern.
So first and foremost, I would not be proposing a cut to Habitat's budget if we didn't have a lot of money stacked up.
So I understand that there's not a cut. What I'm saying is, they asked for a certain amount, and they're, they're not necessarily getting it. I think they're getting, what, half of or little less than half of what they asked per each house? And so I'm just interested in how we can add to that. I will say, though, I did learn that the American Rescue, American Rescue Plan dollars stated that if they, if a municipality had problem homes such as, they didn't really go into full detail, but they had certain problem homes, the city could purchase the property and redevelop it for affordable housing. But for our Chodos that are really doing work to get these communities kind of in the green, I'm really interested in getting them more dollars.
So that's understandable. I will say that a couple of points there. So the community housing development organizations are not our only producer of affordable housing, including single-family, that we can do in the city. But having said that, Habitat's an incredibly important partner. We meet with them every two weeks and sit down and talk about our projects and where our future is going. And so that future right now is on B Street. And we have enough funding for a dozen-plus houses, depending on the project budget of each house on the B Street area. So at their current pace, we've got funding for them for a couple of years.
Okay.
And yeah, and then at that point, you know, hopefully, we will be into a mergers and choice planning effort and redeploying it there.
Okay, so then my next part of my questioning, and I think this may come back later, this week in our budget session. I was interested in our beautification and then our, it's not demolishing, it's blight. And Assistant City Manager Dr. Whitfield informed me that we have different charges of money, understandable. But I think what we ran into last year was, when it came down to community blight, we had run out of the money. And so I want to, as we are very aggressive federal level on down, being aggressive with affordable housing and getting out of the red with our housing, I want to make sure that we don't run out of money again to be able to demolish projects and probably rehab and stuff. So what is the thought on that? And what type of funding do we have in place?
So I've only been with the city a little over a year, but in that, in that time, I can say that for the current budget that we're in, and the two preceding budgets, we have not run out of blight removal funding in our federal grants. But even with that, we are still funding a robust amount of slum and blight removal. I think that targeted clearance in our community is one of the most powerful things we can do to spur redevelopment and do it the right way. And so we are looking for those properties that we would go out and find, whether it's a safety hazard or a high crime area. When code enforcement and minimum housing go out and find a property, they offer our resources to those property owners if they need help to take that property down voluntarily. So on the blight removal, that is something that, over the past two years, we have added continually more funding towards. And we're not going to run out of money.
Thank you.
On the beautification, some really exciting stuff there. We're funding a lot more beautification than we've ever done before with our federal grants. And the reason for that is that we're going to challenge council to move a little bit past the community signs and into some placemaking and kind of urban revitalization-type initiatives. And so we've laid out about $60,000 to try to start conceptualizing that. That's going to be paired with the Choice Neighborhood effort. And so we're going to have a lot of community planning going into some of those things as well.
Okay, so I brought up community beautification because I know that we're putting a lot of dollars into litter abatement. And a lot of times, you clean up something and it gets trashy again. But if you put something in place, so that's good to hear, but you said it will be in partnership with the Choice Neighborhood or the Murchison Road project?
That's the same neighborhood? Yeah.
No, no, no. Hold on, please. Hold on, please. So I'm trying to make sure I understand what you said. I heard, would you just say the Murchison Road project for the Choice Neighborhood?
Yeah, the Murchison.
So are you saying that $60 is going to go to that?
So that is going to be our test for developing projects. That does not mean that all $60,000 is going to go into that area exclusively. We will identify projects. We still have our neighborhood sign programs. We still have our community garden stuff that we work on occasionally. But we will be doing concerted efforts into the Murchison Choice Neighborhood.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember here, and then Waddell. Counsel, we need to keep it to questions. Okay, I'll circle back to you. Councilmember Waddell.
I was also going to make a motion, so I'd like to second Councilmember Harris' motion, if he's moving that we adopt this. Okay, thank you, sir.
All right. So there's a motion by Councilmember here for adoption. There's a second by Councilmember Waddell. It's been robust discussion. All right, counsel, I'll look to you for votes.
Thank you, ma'am. Would like to say it. Say it, the motion.
I'm sorry, sir. Councilmember Banks.
Thank you. Thank you, counsel. Didn't have to say anything.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Good job. Item 10.04, most public hearing to consider closing Crawford Street.
Good evening, Mayor and members of city council.
Good evening.
On April 26th, council set the public hearing to close a portion of Crawford Street for tonight. Crawford Street, this portion that is set to be closed is in the Senior Center East project area. The city owns all the properties surrounding this portion of Crawford Street. There is not going to be anyone who is denied access. The street is actually not open. A traffic analysis was done just to see what connectivity there was, and it was completed, and there was no impact to the city's traffic system. Public utility companies were contacted. We will be reserving an easement for PWC through the closed portion. And police, fire, and rescue were also notified of the closure and responded. There would be no impact to their operations if the closure was approved. Do you have any questions?
Councilmember Ingram is yours a question? All right. All right, no ma'am, not at this time. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
No, sir.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Ingram.
Mayor Colvin, I like, I'm sorry. Mayor, council, I'd like to move to adopt the resolution and order closing an unopened portion of Crawford Street.
All right, is the motion by Councilmember Ingram, seconded by Councilmember here. Any discussion on the motion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes on this. Councilmember Ingram. All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. Motion carries, item 10.05, Juan Valdez. You might need some coffee there, sir.
So our next two items are SN 21003 and SN 21004. They're both renaming of streets. Our first one is O3, which is consideration of naming an unknown street to Dunkinson Lane. This is actually located at the 2900 block of Ramsey Street. And what they're trying to do is do an access road to Hillview Drive, Hillview Avenue for access. And this is needed for E911 and US Postal Services purposes. Staff has reviewed the request and recommend approval. And here is actually an illustration. This is where the house is located. They did not currently have any type of road frontage, so they'll be doing a driveway that will connect to Hillview Avenue. And staff did recommend approval. So this is a public hearing, so you all do have to open it up and then take action.
Yes, sir. All right. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
No, sir.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Waddell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we approve the naming of the unnamed street to Dunkinson Lane.
All right, is the motion by Councilmember Waddell to approve? Is it seconded by Councilmember Kinston, or is that a question? Second. All right, is it seconded by Councilmember Kinston? Any discussion on the motion? Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Kinston. All right, most cares. Item 10.06.
So this next item is 21004. This is consideration of renaming Corporate Road and a portion of Hanger Road to Scotty Rogers Road. This was submitted by Mr. Jay Watts, along with a large group of local pilots and past customers asking for this change. Mr. Rogers and his family has worked in the aircraft maintenance facility at Fayetteville Regional Airport for almost 50 years. Mr. Rogers died from complications associated with COVID-19 in January of 2021 at the age of 74. He was a very important part of the aircraft maintenance staff, which helped keep pilots and passengers safe. This is located in District 2, and staff has recommended approval.
All right. So thank you, sir. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Madam Clerk.
No speakers for this item.
With that, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Ingram.
I like, I move to approve the renaming of Corporate Road and a portion of Hanger Road to Scotty Rogers Road.
All right, is the motion by Councilmember Ingram, is it seconded by Councilmember Kinston? Any discussion on the motion? Are you voting? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your vote. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Item 10.07, Phase 5 annexation, public hearing. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Bring up my slides here for a second. Good evening, council and mayor. I'm here this evening to ask for your approval to proceed with construction for Area 26 and 27 of the Phase 5 sewer extensions. As I always mention when we have these virtual meetings, if people have questions for this, they can reach me either by email at mark.brown@faypwc.com or at 9103918209. So I'll go through a brief presentation, which you've seen many times before, before we open the public hearing. There we go. Area 26 is in District 8, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin's district. So these are about, going to start about the same time. Area 27 is in District 7, Councilmember Wright's district. Project overview, I'm going to talk a little bit about what has happened so far as part of this process. Going to talk about what's coming next. Talk about what the cost to property owners will be and talk about the financing options that they have. So far, on February 14th, 2020, Area 27, we sent out the survey and appraisal notifications to property owners for easements and associated things necessary to install the sewer. And on May 5th, 2020, in Area 26, we did the same thing. On April 26th, the council adopted the preliminary assessment resolution. On May 7th, we sent copies of the resolution mailed to all the property owners in the two areas. Upcoming events, we're going to advertise the construction bids. Then when construction is complete, we will come to council with a preliminary assessment rule. Council will then hold a public hearing and confirm the assessments. The cost to property owners is a typical single-family residential lot. The council has capped the assessment at $5,000. With a 90-foot lot, which is a typical minimum single-family residential lot, that turns out to be $55.56 per linear foot. For anything that's not single-family residential, that same $55.56 is applied to the front footage to determine what their assessment is. No payments due until construction is complete and the assessment rule is adopted and the financial assistance is available through the city for those that qualify. Once the assessment is confirmed, the property owners have the options. They can pay in full with no interest within 30 days. Financing, they can finance up to 10 years. The council policy is established to insert the interest rate at the time that you have confirmed the assessment at prime plus 2% at the beginning of the fiscal year when the assessment is confirmed. And then customers can pay in annually or monthly installments, and there's no penalty for prepayment. With that, if there's any questions?
Thank you, sir. Question, Councilmember here? All right.
Give me the full amount of what prime is plus to 2%. How much are the citizens paying?
I think the most recent properties that were assessed, the interest rate was 6.5%. Prime was about 4.5% and 2% added to make it like 6.5%.
When we first started the, started this, and I remember we had a big deal, what, was it '09 or whenever it was? what, was it oh nine or whenever it was, what, what did we start? What was the percentage we started out with?
The, the original agreement that the city and P W C entered into for, they handled all of Phase Five, specified that the interest would be eight percent, which was the maximum allowable by law. Okay, and then I think the mayor would remember, I want to say twenty fourteen, the council acted to change to the policy, what it is right now, which is prime plus two percent.
Where I'm headed is this. What problems have you received? If people are struggling, and we've had some struggles this year, and just because we're leaving the year, going into a new year in a few months, it doesn't mean that the struggle isn't over.
I agree.
So what struggles have you heard? Wh- wh- where, where do you get those calls at, that feedback? If people are having a problem with prime plus two percent?
Um, so specifically about the interest rate.
Sure.
We do get questions, okay? Um, and so, but I, I have not, let's, let's put that, the last one was assessed, the last assessments that the council confirmed was pre-pandemic. I'm pretty sure, or at the very beginning of the pandemic. So it, the, after we've been through the last year and a half, I, I don't think that we've talked, I've talked to residents about that because they hadn't, hasn't really come up, right? So um, we haven't had significant pushbacks from the citizens about the interest rate. They're always concerned about the assessment, and I think you've all heard it. I didn't ask to be annexed. I didn't ask for the sewer. I don't need the sewer. Why do I have to be assessed? Uh, so that's consistent. Every, everybody expressed that since, since I've been here in twenty thirteen. That's the same concerns you hear all the time. We haven't heard anybody specifically push back about the interest rate. Um, I know they pushed back at eight percent more than they're pushing back now, but we haven't heard specifically pushbacks about that.
I'm, I'm going to, Mayor, I'm going to be having this discussion. I think I'm going to bring it up even on uh, on Thursday, the, the part that we can. I, I would like for us to, to really look at, at that, um, maybe even dropping it a little more. Uh, P W C is not broken. I mean, they, I don't know how much they have in, in savings. What is it, one hundred twenty-five, one hundred thirty million dollars? So whatever, I, I, I think we can do more in helping the folk. This has been a long process. And I've been a part of this process from the very beginning. And we need to do even more uh, with this dragon alone process. So I, I won't support it tonight.
But, well, tonight, there's no action required, I understand.
No actions required?
No action required tonight. All, all we're doing,
Good.
All we're doing is having the public hearing and we will come back to you at your next meeting and ask you to tell us to go ahead and proceed, not, not with the assessments.
Have that discussion with those that you talk to, so why don't you come uh, by?
The, the, the policy is a city council policy. It's not a P W C policy.
Of course, I'm going to do my part.
That's, that's your jurisdiction to what you do there. Okay, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Davis, you had a question or a motion?
No, I had a, um, I had just had a few questions for general citizens. Um, can, can you tell us today what percentage of installation has been done approximately?
Uh, approximately, we, we have finished Area twenty-two out of thirty-four. So we're approximately sixty percent, sixty, sixty-five percent done. We have Area twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five are under construction. Well, yeah, no, twenty, twenty-five is not yet under construction. Area twenty-three and twenty-four is, we have bids, we just recently received bids for Area twenty-five. And the next logical step with twenty-six and twenty-seven is bids.
Um, how about a present completion date roundabout?
I, I believe uh, the last projects are scheduled to start in twenty twenty-four. And depending on the size of them, will be done in twenty twenty-five probably.
And finally, um, do you believe there's any potential for further delay of any other projects scheduled in, in terms of the project completion dates sliding right?
So, so um, I think um, Councilmember Davis is layers on to commission. You heard the discussion that was had. Um, the, as a result of several things, um, part of it is the pandemic. Part of it is that, that the weather events they had in Texas. That the price of PVC pipe has gone through the, gone through the ceiling and that um, the manufacturers of PVC pipe, which we put in, in the sewers, okay, are unwilling to hold prices even for people who've got quotes already. So we recently received bids where they were unable to hold the prices on PVC pipes and the, and the bid was fifty percent above our budget. So we rejected those bids. So depending on whether it happens, that there is, there is the possibility that that might delay the projects. So, from a financial reason, I think the, um, and when I talk about that, I think it's important to put it in perspective. When we started this way back, as Councilmember Harris said in two thousand nine, the anticipated cost of this was two hundred million dollars. We're looking now that the estimated final cost of this is four hundred million dollars. All right, um, and that is, that is being borne partially by the citizens through the assessment, okay? The most recent project we completed, the average cost per parcel was forty-one thousand dollars. And the average assessment is five thousand dollars. And the rest of that cost is being borne by the, the customers of P W C through wastewater rates. And that cost is expected to grow to a total cost of four hundred million dollars, which is more than twice what we originally estimated.
So, so what portion of that forty thousand do the ratepayers actually pay?
So um, so just rough ballpark, so if the assessment is on average five thousand dollars, the remaining thirty-six thousand dollars goes into our rates and is paid by the ratepayers. So thirty-six thousand dollars times a hundred lots, three point six million dollars that's spread over to customers. Okay, the, 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 the project before that was about twenty-one thousand dollars, which is six thousand dollars more than we thought it would, would be when we started. That's a long time ago. And the one before that was thirty-one thousand dollars. So what's happening is that as we get further west, yeah, that, that, the, the density is less than it was. You get, you get more uh, large lots that aren't quite developed yet. And so you have to extend the sewer longer to get to the next dense, dense area. And so that's generally what's happening. Of, of course, I think we've seen for some of the construction costs, construction costs are up, okay? Um, but the pipe thing is a specific thing that's, you know, recent, at, at, you know, recent occurrence. But we're seeing, you know, as the areas change, that, that the costs are getting more expensive to do that.
But the ratepayers carry that, that trickles down through their?
The rate, the, basically, you know, P W C's a nonprofit, so the cost of running the business is paid for by the ratepayers through rates. I mean, uh, at the commission meeting on Wednesday, um, well, I think it's not, it's, it's on, it's the next commission meeting in June. We're going to have a water rate discussion, okay, and you're going to see that, that in order to keep up with the costs, all the costs, but, but the annexation's a part, big part of that, that we're going to have to have a significant rate increase to cover those costs. Other questions?
Uh, yes, sir, we did have one or two more. I did have a question for you, so, and maybe the attorney remembers this, but I, I think right now, if an annexation took place, uh, the statute gives cities how long to provide water sewer services?
I, I, I don't remember, but I think it's three years. An attorney might know better than I do, but, and, um, and the, the other thing to remember about that is it, it's the city's responsibility.
Right, and, because most cities handle their own water sewer, but in our case, we allow P W C to do that.
You understand it, yes.
Correct?
Yeah, so when, when the annexation, the Big Bang Annexation happened, um, the city had that obligation and, and P W C entered into agreement with the city that we would fulfill that obligation for you.
Well, you didn't have a choice because we didn't have a water sewer department, right?
Well, you, you didn't have to have a department to do that. You could have hired somebody to do that.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, so, so, so where I was going with that was.
I'm not trying to argue with you.
Yeah, no, no, no. No, well, I guess where I was going was to show that the statute says that you, two to three years, you should have it done.
Right, yeah, and, and.
And so our situation was two thousand five to two thousand twenty-one, not P W C's fault necessarily, but it's, it's a longer, spread out longer.
And I can explain why that took longer.
But now the cost has gone from two hundred million to four hundred million.
Right.
So the longer it takes, the more it costs.
Longer it takes, the more it costs, but the thing, the thing that, um, that, put it in perspective. At the time of the Big Bang Annexation, P W C's.
Phase Five Annexation.
Phase Five Annexation, thank you, Mr. McDonald. The time of the Phase Five Annexation, okay? This, the um, P W C's existing sanitary sewer system met the minimum requirements to meet the three-year timeframe. So we met the general statutory requirements. Our existing system met the statutory requirements. So the city did not have to do it on a condensed timeframe, that we were able to do it over a longer time, which made it more manageable to actually do it. Because there were, there were seven thousand parcels, seven thousand parcels throughout the city that need the sanitary sewer. So because the P W C system was in place, it met the statutory requirements, which did not, therefore, when the city annexed those portions, they didn't have to do it in three years. Which you can think about the, what the financial burden would have been on trying to do all of those parcels in three years. So one of the reasons that it was extended is because it was not a statutory requirement that allowed us to do it in a, a more time, a more cost-effective way. The other thing that we don't talk about very frequently here is the way we do the construction. Okay, is we work five days a week. We work, you know, from like seven o'clock in the morning till five o'clock at night. We don't work at night. We don't do things that would reduce the cost because we know it would be a burden on the citizens and we recognize the burden that this puts on the citizens when we go in and put sewer into existing areas. Where there are mailboxes and gas lines and electric lines, okay, and those kinds of things and driveways, those kinds of things. So, so it, one of the reasons why it, it takes so long to do in areas is because we do that in consideration of the citizens, because we know what a burden it is on the citizens.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, most of my questions have been answered, um, but one of my question is, um, were they not supposed to be, uh, finished in twenty twenty-three?
Twenty, twenty, twenty-four is the, on our website is the start of the last project. If you look at their website, I think twenty twenty-four is when we'll start the last projects.
Okay, I was under the impression it was, well, twenty twenty-three. Um, I guess what this is for council, um, I've been having the same concerns that Councilman here mentioned, um, regarding residents in that, um, in my area as far as the assessment fee. So um, I hope that we can have a further discussion as far as decreasing the assessment, especially because of the pandemic, or at least extending um, the payment out for a longer period of time.
The, the, just on the longer period of time, the ten years is a statutory, is granted by statute, so that's the limit by statute.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right, council, Councilmember Wright?
So there's no action?
There's no action needed.
Taken just to, um.
At your next meeting, we'll have a consent item. We're, we're asking you to give us permission to proceed with construction.
Okay. All right, well, Mr. Mayor, um, if there's no action need to be taken, we received the report from P W C at this time, Phase Five Annexation.
This public hearing, we're, we're good, so.
Good.
All right, there were no speakers. All right, sir.
Okay, thank you.
See you next time. All right, uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I was going to ask, um, if there was any consideration that, um, we would like to continue the rest of this meeting for, um, five o'clock on Thursday at our budget meeting. I didn't know if there would be a consensus on that.
Sounds like a motion, didn't it?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion and I'm sorry, Mr. Hume, um, I, I know that it's late. I was just wondering if there would, I'd like to make a motion for that.
All right, there's a motion. There's a, is that a second, Councilmember what else? All right. All right, council, there's a motion and a second, uh, to continue the meeting until Thursday, five P M. All right, let's see for action on that.
Move to adjourn.
All right, motion carries. See you, see you Thursday.